At seven o'clock, called to order the regular meeting here at the City Council of City of Renzess Pass, 600 West Cleveland Boulevard, on June 20th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the invitation.
Lord, we'd like to give you thanks for this beautiful day. We ask you to bless all the citizens here. We ask you to take care of the ones that don't feel so well. We ask you to lend a giving hand to our youngsters as they enjoy their summer. We ask you to watch over all our public works, all our city workers. We actually watch over the whole community, help lift our spirits as we come here today to come to do the better judgments we can for the city. We ask you to watch out for our visitors that are coming in and out, and hopefully they enjoy their stay here in Renzess Pass. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to bring us to item number three, presentation and proclamations of employee recognition. Sylvia?
Mayor and Council, this time I'd like three of our utility business offices employees to step up, Dr. E. J. P., Mel Snyder, and Delon Smith. These folks are being recognized for their tremendous, tremendous amount of work. I don't know if the audience or the council is aware, but we recently went through some conversion. You guys approved some bond monies. These folks, in order to make our go-live, in order to make our payment online on our website go-live, worked three and four in the morning, on top of the normal duties during the flood, on top of the normal calls and complaints that have been thrown out the day, every single day. They go above and beyond. They don't all live in the city, but they treat the city as well as they treat their home. So, for that, thank you very much. If I could swim in my woods. Donna's Director of Finance, but has been, her staff has been instrumental in moving us right over that mountain.
Thank you very much. Just to bring us to an update on Sherwood Forest.
Mayor and Council, this Sherwood Forest rezoning was before Planning Commission, at the last Planning Commission meeting. There was some concern as to whether or not the residents were given proper notice. You saw your email on the notice requirements in the local government code and how we notice and where we get our addresses. In order to allay the fears of folks that say we're not properly noticing, we are going to table the Planning and Zoning Commission date to a July date, which means the council will see the proposed Sherwood Forest zoning in the August time period.
The problem with the recite, they didn't get through the mail, right?
Yes, and the proper protocol is the affected area within 200 feet. If there's a rezoning that happens at 507 Arch, for example, everybody within 200 feet gets noticed, and we get those addresses from the appraisal district and the tax assessor collector. Folks still say they didn't receive notice, they have, they were not aware. It is also noticed in the, it's also noticed at the paper, and it's also listed in the cabinet up front, so.
Well, we gave no, only say we went through registered letter or something, or through the mail, or just regular mail?
They are just regular mail, I believe. Catherine? Yeah, they're just regular mail.
Is there any questions from council on this? No? And this is going to bring us to item five, will be approval of the minutes.
No, it brings us to a presentation, stormwater update.
Oh, okay, I missed that one.
And please take notice of our new numbering system. It is web-generated, as the new website also has a feature called Agenda Center. So, the minute we publish the agenda, it is live for the entire world to see. So, we're going to go through the 2016 flood event. I promised council and the residents a recap of what happened in the May time period. I'll remind the council that in 2016 FEMA has issued new maps and identified that area as a seclusion area, meaning there was an issue as to whether that area receives proper flood protection. We had the long and drawn-out battle as to whether or not the levee was certifiable, because there are private structures on the levee. It is not certifiable. That would require us to buy out those properties, which is not feasible for the city and not feasible for the property owners who have resided there for some time, and those homes are in the millions of dollars. So, what FEMA decided is they would call that a natural valley, meaning it is a natural earthen berm that has occurred over a period of time. Some of that berm has been the result of dirt moving, some of that berm is purposeful that the city has made. So, we're going to go through a recertification process this year into 2017. I will also remind the council and the residents, we did go through a lamp process. There have been three public meetings. That's called a levee analysis and mapping process. The folks in Bay Harbor and Pelican Cove were very, very interested in that process, and we had a full house when we had Civic Center. The Bay Harbor residents received very little in the way of their FEMA certification. Pelican Cove folks, we're still deciding how much of an impact those folks are going to receive. The thought process is they're on the other side of the levee. Even though Bay Harbor is not protected at all by the levee, their flood rates didn't change, so. The website that the residents can go and take a look at the information is at riskmap6.com. So, this is what FEMA says is going to happen in a flood event, and that is exactly what happened in our May event. The levee also acts as a bowl, and it also acts to retain water. There are, the changes that will be required through FEMA is properties that were not required to have flood insurance at one point in time will now be required to have flood insurance. That is specifically those properties on commercial heading toward staff. They were never required to have flood insurance, and they are required, they will be required under the new maps to provide flood insurance. This is also a 500-year event that was experienced. The city plans for five-year events, that is the standard flood and drainage practice. We get pushed back when we try to plan a 10-year event. The residential housing that was here that is trying to add the brick homes across from Neil Amsler's Hogan Home Development, staff pushed for a 10-year event in order to not flood downstream, because that neighborhood is already flooding. Developers push back and say that is too expensive a proposition. This particular developer decided he's not going to build in Renzess Pass. This is the city drainage map. If you'll notice, everything on 1069, for the most part, this is what I call the city's rooftop. The majority of the city drains toward the bay. Here, the rest of the city drains to the McCambles' slough. We have drainage areas here that have never been properly dug. Our city forefathers in the 40s and 50s identified areas specifically along Saunders and Greenwood, 100-foot right-of-way, that serves nothing more right now than a burrow pit. It is not being properly utilized as a drainage area. Further exacerbating the problem is there are several outfalls, specifically at Wheeler and along Conbrow Harbor, that have just been covered up. I don't have a reason, I don't understand. The Army Corps of Engineers is helping us identify where those permits and why those outfalls were blocked. But if you'll recall, we had to redo the outfall over at Huff, because during the construction of the bulkhead, the 24-inch outfall was discovered to have been blocked. It was a big wet stain on the concrete bulkhead, and it blew out the repairs that were happening. So, we had to reopen that outfall further into Redfish Willie property. That is the same for all of the outfalls located in Conbrow Harbor. So, for whatever reason, they're blocked off. The pumps are updated, upgraded to larger-style pumps, but we're facing gravity. We have two foot in some areas and 16 feet in this area. So, we are trying to come uphill and over a levee with pumps. And for the amount of water that was received in that time period, it's just not going to happen, and I'll show you the pictures as to why. These are our drainage. This is the Euclid ditch. This is 6-4, well after the event. You can see that ditch retains water, because if you recall from the prior slide, most of the city is draining in that direction. These are what we call duck bills and outfall pipes. The ditch is on the other side of this. This is at low tide. We have had historic tides, and I'll show that to you in just a minute. You can see there is nowhere for the water to go. Even when we turn on the pump to bring it over the levee, we are just creating a circulation area. These are the high tide, the observed water levels from May 15th to June the 5th. The blue is what was predicted, and the red is actual. The blue should be underneath the line of those pipes. The red is what was actually received. So, those pipes are consistently underwater. We're trying to force gravity and pump to fight against the elements, basically. Again, observed water levels from that period of May 15th to June the 5th. You'll see we're a foot and a half, almost two feet above what we should be in a lot of the areas. This is Conbrow Harbor. This is the area that causes so much distress to our wastewater treatment plant, and these are the pumps. This is Wheeler Street. That is a tremendous acre-feet amount of water. We are pumping this pump, again, 16 feet over, trying to fight Mother Nature. Look at where that high tide is. Can't beat it. Really can't beat trying to get that water over with that size of pump. These are residences along, along the harbor. Mr. Limon was here. Very devastating floods about the Limon and the Commangores. This is on Pacific and Atlantic Streets. And this is why. Again, staff pushes for a 10-year flood event, we get pushed back. You're killing development. You don't want to see any growth in the city, the doggone city. This is why. The Euclid ditch used to take water in this direction and feed it to this direction. Look what got built there. There's nowhere for that water to go. We're trying to feed in a tremendous amount of water and let it surface drain along little ditches, which are not adequate. We've got a pump station here trying to fight gravity again and pumping over. There are some smaller outfalls here, but obviously you're not going to carry the quantity of water. So, I've been asked, why aren't the pumps on? Well, we have a 20-minute protocol. It's got to be raining for 20 minutes in order for staff to get out there. We're going to change that to 15 minutes, but at the same time, our other protocols require water in ditches to be reduced, especially when there's an event coming. The problem is, in the recent weeks, the meteorologists are predicting one and two inches of rain, not 12. One inch of rain, not three. So, the pump station procedures have been reviewed. There, there is room for improvement. We do have the maintenance person that is scheduled to be on staff July the 1st. This is our future drainage change. I showed you the drainage map. Our discussion last time was to fund a stormwater study. My recommendation is, we don't have time to study it, we just need to dig it, and the council agreed. So, in the areas where the city forefathers did identify those ditches, that is exactly what we're going to be doing, is digging the ditches and receiving, the receiving body of waters, making sure things tie in, and those ditches, some of our ditches are, go to nowhere, and they just serve as mosquito breeding grounds and other health issues. So, making sure our ditch system ties. And I'm really going to push the council for more stringent design standards, at least from a five-year event to a 10-year event. The developers will complain that, yes, it is an increased expense. Reality, it's the difference in the pipe size, whether you go from a 24 to a 36-inch pipe, and that is the cost. It is the cost and the difference of pipe. You can ask the folks along D. Berry who have recently received their new, some new neighbors, new neighborhood. It's already causing flooding issues. And why? Because the design standard is to a five-year standard. So, future improvements. What can we do better? I will tell you that I am extremely proud of the City of AP staff. We were the only EOC activation and response in our area. The only one. We need best practices for PD dispatch. Fully aware, some folks called, where do we go? Where do we go? We hadn't opened up the shelter. At this particular point in time, we've got to do better among our internal communication. Our shelter needs to be established sooner. This was our shelter of last resort in the particular event. Folks who got here needed socks, they needed dry clothes. We weren't prepared for any of that. We figured folks would grab what they could, but there was simply not enough time. The waters rose very quickly. Some radios, we need a small john boat. It was very difficult to get into that area with the equipment that we have without causing waves or tremendous issues later on in the, some of the bigger equipment that we have. Putting additional personnel on the pumps and cleaning the drains in advance of storm events. And we need And we need an inventory of equipment in advance of disaster to be able to know what to dispatch and where, and where things are situated. But we did an absolutely awesome job with our code red activation. Every staff that was activated responded within the time manner that was required. So, I want to tell you about the staff impact. And a lot of these staff don't live here, okay? This is our building official, recently relocated here. This is his disabled wife. The building official plays a tremendous role in making sure that our FEMA reports are done. He has to do windshield survey the minute sunlight hits, because he's got to be able to give an assessment of how much is actually damaged to be able to provide the report so that we can get our emergency reports into the state, into the governor's office, into the county, so those disaster declarations can be met. They lost all of their belongings in their car. This was their home. And yet, he was here at 7:00. And their recent transplants to Aransas Pass. We had a 3:00 AM activation. All hands on deck. I manned the shelter myself. The police chief drove in from Portland, not a resident. Community enrichment, Civic Center, and the fire chief all drove in from Rockport. The Public Works Director did not have a babysitter. He brought in his own personal vehicle on his vacation time, because he knew he couldn't bring his child to work during staff time. The fire chief reported to work at 4:00 in the morning. He emptied his fridge of food, because he knew he was going to have to cook for staff, because staff would not be leaving during this event. But guess what? Instead of feeding the staff, we had to feed the folks who showed up here. The assistant fire chief lost all of his contents, and he reported to work during the flood. My bigger response to that is, there was a comment that was made about whether or not we are dedicated or have buy-in into Aransas Pass. I will tell you, there is not a staff member on my team who has not bought into this community, who does not give their all, because that's what I require of them. That's what this community requires. There is not a staff member on our team that does not consider this place home and will do the best work possible for this community. Any questions?
What is your original SOP?
Regarding?
Standard operating procedures.
Regarding which? Those are... That is what I showed you up there. That is the SOP for pumps.
The 20 minutes?
20 minutes. If rain is light to moderate, on-call staff will go out after a 20-minute period.
Are those pump automatic or manual?
Only pump station one is not on floats. The rest are on floats.
Number one is which one?
Maddocks.
How many hours were worked by the staff during that time? Do you have an estimate of that?
I can't give you an estimate. Everybody was on overtime staff. There was not one staff member. Even folks who were fixing to be on vacation, vacation was rescinded. They were put on notice. We didn't have to rescind any vacation, but folks should put on notice that they may not be able to leave the area. And I will remind the council that prior to my tenure, the emergency operating procedure for Aransas Pass was that staff pack up and go to Selma and operate City Hall from Selma, which is near San Antonio.
That's true.
That's not an emergency operation procedure, and that's not what our residents expect. I couldn't be prouder of the work the staff did.
Well, I agree with you there as far as the dedication of the staff. Sometimes it's hard to find staff members.
Sometimes it's hard to find staff that was that dedicated with... You know, without saying, "It's not part of my job, it's my responsibility." So, I commend you and the staff for the... How you all performed during that difficult time for Aransas Pass.
Thank you. And they continue to perform. We're not done. There are debris piles. There are mosquitoes. There is all of the work that still remains to be done, and we balance it with everything else that we do. We had folks complaining about road cave-ins during the time we were working shrimpery. So, it's a matter of balancing the staff that we have, balancing the resources. And honestly, our staff does it without complaint. Without complaint. And oftentimes, they get beat up way more than they deserve. I don't mind taking the beating. That's what I'm here for. It bothers me a great deal when the staff takes the beating. And I've read the articles where the staff's not doing their work, the staff hasn't done their work. That bothers me a very great deal, because staff does the work that they are told to do with the resources they are given.
In regards to the drainage solution?
Mm-hmm.
I know that last council meeting, we did say... That we did not, as a council, want to pursue a study.
Correct.
Because a study is just someone coming in and telling us what...
We already know.
What we already know. That we have a drainage problem. But I think as a collected whole, I may be speaking out of turn, but I do believe that we do need a bonded utility company with an engineered plan on exactly how to follow out that plan and exactly, you know...
Correct. Correct. It would not be...
We may not need a study, but we absolutely need a plan by a...
No, absolutely.
By a bonded utility company.
Absolutely. And first step is getting our hands on those Army Corps permits.
Right.
And to be perfectly honest with you, they are in the desert on their records. They've just converted their record system, too. So, it's going to take them a while to be able to resurrect. If no permit is required, and they can consider this under the nationwide, then I'm told that's a 60-day response. If a permit is required, that is a four-to-six-month response. To tell me that a permit is required, and then probably 18 months to issue a permit. So, it's not a short term. And in the meantime, jetting, doing what we can in the right of way upstream to be able to get some of that water to move.
What is the elevation difference between the highs to the lows going down to the bay?
At Public Works, Eric's telling me it's 29 feet. And when you go to this particular area, you're looking at two and three feet above sea level. It's a pretty dramatic drop. And that's why I call that the rooftop to the city, because the rest of that drains to the McCambles' Slough, which, in a flood event, if you've seen the scenarios, the bay actually comes around, and so it's going to flood the slough, and it will eventually flood the city during a category five storm.
One of the questions that was asked of me, and I didn't have the answer, was, "Do we provide sandbags and stuff?"
No. No, we do not. We don't have a mechanism. No, we don't have a mechanism to provide sandbags.
Is there something we can think about?
Sure.
I know that's not taking care of the problem, but it was a good question. Somebody had asked me that.
I know in the past, the... I know when I worked at the bank, that we had bags that were...
Prefilled?
They were pre-filled, that were already stacked there, just in case we were having storms. So, I mean, we didn't get that from the city. It was just something that was brought in, I think, a couple of years back, just to... In case the storms are coming, we are prepared.
Those sandbags are typically made of a plastic fiber.
Right.
And after so many years, that fiber gives way. So, when you go to pick up that sandbag, you're going to lose. You're going to lose all of that sand.
But that was something that was, you know, being prepared for that. I don't know, they're still there since we don't...
One of the... One of the new technologies is something called Aqua Dam. And it basically looks like a three-ring swimming pool that you put around your house, and it's filled with your basic garden hose, and it creates a dam around the house. It's an expensive proposition, about $8,000 a structure. But it is something for folks to consider, especially in a lot of those low-lying areas.
So, what you're telling us, not going to be an easy fix. It's going to take time.
It is not going to be an easy fix. You know, and again, I will remind the council of how many drainage projects have been before you in the last decade. There haven't been any. This council, this city, has not historically worked on infrastructure. That just has not been a priority. The last three years of my administration, we've worked hard to free up money and keep the tax rate low. Keep the tax rate steady. And freeing up money by just being fiscally responsible. Freeing up money by refinancing. Freeing up money in every iota that we can in order to fund some of those projects without having to go borrow additional money that's going to cause an additional payment that may cause the tax rate to rise. That's not an easy fix. We have reached... We have an additional $3 million to work with. We still have the residuals from the last $10 million issuance. $3 million is not going to fix the drainage issue, but it will make an impact into some of those outfalls that need to move that water, especially where the pumps are required to fight gravity. That just seems like a no-win situation with directional drilling, having moved technology so far that we're still trying to pump water 16 feet up in the air to get over a berm.
You said our pumps are manually, right? Or some auto?
Maddocks is manual. The rest are on floats. But if you recall, one of the things I said was that we don't have resident experts on staff, and that's where Mr. Gomez's expertise comes in and his experience in those areas. And my hope is that he will... Well, not my hope, my expectation is he's going to cross-train the staff with the needed skills to maintain and operate those pumps.
On those right-of-ways, we're talking about the 100-foot right-of-ways, like on Saunders, everything, do we need the special permits to dig those out? Or can we start digging?
The receiving body of water has to be identified, and that'll dictate whether or not a permit is going to be received, so...
Okay, and the receiving body, like the bay?
Yes. And that's... And I'm glad you brought that up, because that's a discussion that I've shared with some of you. That's a concern that I share. Those outfalls that go into the bay, we're going to have folks who are going to be discussing the quality of water and the salinity and all of the other good stuff. And that's going to be a decision the council's going to have to make. That's going to be a hard decision that comes in terms of water quality and what we can do to protect that. It is a freshwater inflow. It's not necessarily a contamination issue. However, there are folks who put in fertilizers and things, and all of that is going to be included in that runoff. But I will tell you, if you go back to the picture that shows Wheeler, all of this water, it's not evaporating. And as you can see, we're not pumping it as fast as we can. That water is going straight into the wastewater treatment plant. That water is causing our wastewater treatment plant to be at capacity. So, when you get the phone calls from the folks over on staff and Maddocks and in the harbor area, and they can't flush their toilet, that's why, because the lines are full. The lines are absolutely full of stormwater.
Do we ask staff members to contest the water now?
Yes, we do. We do water quality monitoring at the JBS site and at the Gulf King site already. So, we would have to add that into our normal routine. But I'm just letting the council know, there are natural outfalls. There is water runoff, but we're going to be increasing the discharge. I mean, all of this water here is going to have to go somewhere.
And how many right-of-ways do we have that we can make these retention ponds or big ditches with?
We have two on the north side of town that are 40- and 60-foot right-of-ways that are miles long. We have the Saunders area that's over 100 feet wide. That is about a mile, mile and a half long. There are very large areas that can serve as, yes, retention.
A lot of acre-feet of water.
Acre... Acre-feet of water, yes. But, you know, again, watching what the downstream effect is going to be. I can retain that water, and then we have to, at some point, slowly release it. If you drive by the McCambles' ditch, which is on Commercial on your way to the Aquatic Center, it's always full. Folks forget about the impact of surface drainage. Water's going somewhere. We get lots of complaints about neighbors, you know, flooding neighbors, et cetera, et cetera. It's, you know, water. Water finds its own level. It's going to find the path of least resistance, and it is very destructive.
As far as the infrastructure, I know it's decaying and we have problems with it. Do we have an idea of basically where our main arteries are? Underground?
Our main arteries for storm?
Yeah.
We have... We have... Yes and no. This city paid for a study by our prior engineer to the tune of several million dollars, and those maps are not valid. We have to field-verify every piece of information that's on those maps.
Do we have staff with line locators and stuff to...
We call for a dig test, and we do rudimentary line locates. Very rudimentary line locates. But once they locate the line, we now have a GPS device that feeds it into the tremble and then puts it into our CAD database, and we're making the maps as we go. But, you know, again, the heartbreak that I feel is, while I feel all the residents, I feel you guys... And I say "you guys," the city has paid for two decades into engineering studies, and none of the data is usable. We're now paying the piper for that.
And that's part of what we're trying to recover.
That's what we're trying to recover, yes. Court date for the first recovery is set for October of 2016.
And that's just drainage stuff, not including the harbor?
The October 2016 court date is for the work at Conbrow Harbor. I will be in deposition scheduled two days, June 29th and June 30th. They may try to settle the case. I would really like a peer of 12 people in San Patricio County to see the work down there and issue a ruling that it was really worth a million dollars.
Hopefully, they're voters. Besides that, we still got to deal with the Parks and Wildlife, too, right? For the same deal?
Yes, there is an outstanding Army Corps issue with seagrass mitigation. The initial location for the ramps extended too far, and they disturbed more than what was required. So, as opposed to a .16 acre site, we've now got to find a .25 acre site in an area outside of our vicinity in order to provide a new seagrass planting bed.
Is there any other questions for council? Any questions for the citizens on this deal, since you're affected by it? Ma'am?
You can... Sir, you can open it up at public comment. The presentation has to close, and then you can move up to public comment.
Are you done with your presentation?
Yes.
Come on up.
Yeah, you have to approve the minutes. You have to go to item 5, and then you can open it up to citizens' comments.
Give me a minute, ma'am. Okay. Item 5 approval of the minutes for May 16, 2016.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Of the minutes.
Oh, the minutes. The minutes, excuse me, May 16.
I second.
All right, there we go.
All right, ma'am.
All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My apologies. I apologize. All right, your... Citizen comments are now open. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. I don't... I'm not an engineer or anything.
Ma'am, what is your name and your address, please?
My name is Susan Ottevold, and I live at 1500 West Mount, number 68. I'm not an engineer or anything, but why could you have an Aqua system that would take the water underfoot of a pipeline that would take it out to sea?
That's exactly what we're talking about in this drainage map. We're talking about directional drilling under to be able to take that water out. But the outfalls are blocked right now. We need to open them up. They're cemented over by a portion of the bulkhead.
Okay, I have another comment, but should I wait till after?
No, you have the floor for three minutes.
Okay. I live on West Mount, and I have to stop down 13th all the time, and the roads are deplorable. Right here, I have an invoice for when I had to get my... The part of... It's like a load support, but it's on the bottom of the frame of the car, just from driving down 13th and that lot. It cost me $699 to fix. That's a considerable chunk of change. And I just don't understand why... I mean, I've lived in Gaslight Village, off and on, for 15 years, and the problem has always been the same. And so...
Thank you, ma'am.
Council will be approving that contract later on in this agenda.
I'm James Redmond. I live at 701 South Lamont. And I think part of the biggest problem, I have a few questions, but the one thing, years ago, some of you old timers in town know, some of y'all don't, when he left it, you'd have Wyman Alley down there, the Thunderbird Flats. And all of that was lowland down in there, where super eight motels and everything, and then they came in and they built everything up in town. Pelican Cove, it was all urban renewal cleaned out, lowland and stuff and everything, they came in, built that up, built houses. And just in my opinion, that's what caused the water back between Commercial and down there, is all this area's been built up. But also during Hurricane Celia, we had quite a bit of rain, and we never had flooding like that. Of course, that was before that area was built up, and it drained out into the bay. Only time it didn't drain in the bay was during Hurricane Hewlett, when they couldn't get the gates open on the flood deal, left the water out, and it did flood back up to the railroad track. Used to be Pearl Brewery and stuff there. And so, on Saunders, now they covered in that ditch, but is there a drainage pipe under that, or did they just fill in the drainage ditch?
Saunders has been filled in. That's one of the areas we need to reopen.
See, that used to be open when I was a kid. If you go down that drainage ditch there, down at Debury's...
That's exactly the hundred-foot right-of-way.
You go underneath there, and one section goes out to Oak Forest, and the other section goes out across from the Campbell, and out that drainage ditch out there goes up past Hampton's Landing and that, and everything. So I think your major problem is, is that a lot of this stuff has been built up, and there hasn't been any insight about, they've diverted water onto other people's property is what they've done. They put in that drainage ditch, but when you're at sea level, it's hard to get anything to drain. So, you know, the pump shouldn't be running at that drainage ditch, and that's all I have.
I think you're absolutely right in saying that, and the development that came in years ago obviously has a major impact on where the drainage is going now. And fortunately, the leaders of this city and Public Works and mayors and city council and city managers, I just think they did not have the knowledge to know to tell these developers that you have to have a drainage problem, a plan, drainage plan.
Y'all probably gonna be happy, I sold my house and moved, and pretty sure I sold it.
Mr. Stubbs?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for the time. I'm an old timer, too, just not an old timer here. I do live in Gaslight Village, on 1500 Matlock, and the lady was right, our road conditions are deplorable. But there's two things that really exacerbate the problem. Number one, when it rains, and I'm not talking about 500-year flood, I'm talking a couple inches, we have raw sewage coming up on top of 13th Street. I drive through that, and my truck still smells like it when I park in the back of Gaslight Village. It's not gonna hurt my truck, I sure feel sorry for those young kids that live in the housing project, that play out there. I wish y'all would, too. That is a problem. The other problem with those two intersections is, and I say this lightly, the housing project, I have no problem with the housing project, but think of how much that multiplies the traffic with that much multiple housing in that small of an area beating those two roads up.
I went through there the other evening, that's...
Bad.
Yeah, zigzagging to the New York.
We, after it quit raining, we still have water standing in Matlock and on 13th Street for two weeks. I mentioned to my wife Sunday afternoon, we were driving, and I said, "Look at that, the curb is dry, first time in two weeks." Yeah, it's Matlock, great. But here's what I want to say about it. Understand that, it's a budget issue. And I chuckle when I hear anybody say the word fixed income, because we're all on fixed income. Your income for the city is fixed on the taxes you can assess. People either trade years, months, or hours for income. It's all fixed, I don't care. The problem of it is, if I let my house go to the condition the streets are in, y'all are gonna assess me and make it happen. I expect the same from you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stubbs.
Hi, I've never did this before. I'm Judy Miller, I live in Gaslight Village, number 58. I am also the park manager of Gaslight Village. And I get a lot of calls about the streets, which I requested people call City Hall, because I can't control them. And if I call by myself, it doesn't tell you that you've got seventy other people over there, just in Gaslight Village complaining about the streets. I've only been over there for a year, but they have done nothing but deteriorate. We did get a fix last Friday, I believe, where they filled in some of the holes that were probably about a foot deep, but it's still, it's still a roller coaster every two feet. And I have a small Jeep that sits high. I can't imagine driving a low-riding vehicle on that. The other thing is, when, I appreciate the effort to get citizens involved, but when they did the street survey, I found it real frustrating, because I don't know where all the streets are. I don't drive up and down those streets, I use Wheeler and Commercial. And a lot of the people in the park were under the impression that whoever got the most votes was gonna get the streets fixed. And it's a real shame that that's how we're making that determination. It should be the condition of the streets, because the condition of those is horrible. I know that they just repaved Ninth Street, which set almost everybody off in the park, because we can barely drive down 13th, and Ninth had a couple of hot holes that we paved. So I'm really hoping that we see some action on Matlock and West Matlock, at least in that last block. It's not atrocious up to there, but that last block is ridiculous, from Thirteenth North, West, Thirteenth West. And as far as that goes, even 13th Street, just past Matlock, it's not near as bad. And we do have, we've got raw sewage coming out through those pipes, and that is ridiculous to have that situation. And it doesn't take thirteen inches of rain to get that sewage, it only takes a couple. This is South Texas, that's how we get our rain, so these mild winter springs the last couple of days are nothing. We usually get a couple, like inches in a month. Anyhow, I hope, and I did notice that, I didn't hear you say that you're gonna vote on 13th, that's not Matlock, and Matlock's been beaten down, too, so appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything, citizen comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Annie Melton, I live in 1940 South Commercial. First of all, I have been through three major earthquakes that have led us to this past. Hewlett, we had severe flooding. Carla, I had two feet of water inside my van, still there, and I had six feet above sea level. And then Celia, we had a ten-foot tidal wave that came in, okay? But we never had catastrophe like on Arch and Willis Street, ever. I went down to help Mrs. Maddox with the Methodist Church. This is sad. Ever one of you, when you go down to those houses and something like this happens, and offered a help? This is, that woman is ninety-two years old, and ten-foot in her cell, she lost her car. So thank God for the Methodist Church, they came out of Corpus and rebuild. And the Church of Christ was the only church, other church, I knew that gave anything during this time. I don't belong to neither one of them, but I knew that that poor lady was elderly, and I hope in God that I get that edge from somebody like me that'll come help, too. The drain that goes down Ransom Road, if you get on top of it, the Commercial, you can look over, and those are Italian bushes that have grown down, all the way down into the water. It is completely cutting off the water from my side of town, and I'm sure some people on the other side of Debury's is cutting it off, too. So that definitely, we did have a crew that used to go down there and cut those things out of there. That lawnmower that they use will not go down that far, it has to be done by hand. But I think we have some pretty good guys working for the Public Works that put on their waiters and get down there and save us, that would be the cheapest way. The drains on Hewlett need to be opened, that goes underneath that lady into Pelican Cove. I don't care what Pelican Cove people say, that they can afford it, they've got insurance, they can afford it, kick that in. But those poor people that pick in those older homes, those are poor people, and most of them are older people. So if you drive down there, not only during this, that has been a trash pit from day one, even when we don't have any rain, there is scum, building, moss, mold, tires, everything thrown in there. So it definitely needs to be put in there and drained to where there's not anything in there. Now, as far as getting up over down there in the harbor, get through that harbor and put a pipe.
That's what we're talking about.
That's very simple.
That's exactly what we're discussing with the Army Corps.
So I've seen two different times pumping up the dill and down, because when I go to check on the harbor, because I used to be in the shrimping industry and lost my boat in Celia. So I go down there, take my hamburger, and sit there in the park and watch the birds. We have floodgates. Those floodgates should never be closed unless we have the tide coming in, because if you close it, that's gonna hold the water in the pan. And where is the trash pickup for Arch and Willis Street? There's still trash sitting out there, and I feel sorry for those people that have lost everything and stand there and have to look out their front door, would you say?
We put trash dumpsters out there, and Republic has done extra collections.
Well, as to that, there's still trash out there. And a ninety-two-year-old woman taken to the dumpster. And that's our responsibility, because they have to sit there and look if everything we lost, and they can't have the funds at their age to be replaced.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
For the record, Mary Schmett, Euclid Street, not Hewlett.
Good evening. My name's Elizabeth McLeaver, I live 1310 Park Drive. I do not live in Gaslight Village, but I go over here every day to check on a disabled individual. And I have to spend a thousand dollars to get the dash in my truck replaced when one of the tires fell into one of those twelve-inch holes. But as Judy had indicated, they have filled those up, but they're starting, after just Friday, they're starting to beat out again into pits. And I must say, each and every time I go to any of your city workers, and I have the capability, I stop and thank them for what they're doing, because I know it's hot and miserable out there, and they're trying, and I know everybody stops and says, "Would you please go fix my hole on the street?" I do commend them for what they do, but we definitely have got to have something done. It's a one-block stretch of asphalt that needs to be fixed on Matlock. From here, from this place to Matlock, over to 13th Street is fine, but from 13th to the end of Matlock needs to be fixed. And just from Wheeler to the north end of 13th needs to be fixed. We're not talking miles and miles, we're talking four, five blocks that need to be worked on desperately. And I appreciate you taking consideration to do it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jared Guffman, I live at 1406 West Matlock. And I've been listening to these folks talk about the street conditions. When we turn on Wheeler on to 13th, if we have two inches of rain, there'll be water shooting out of sewer, covers three locations from Wheeler to Matlock, there's three of them. You'll have water shooting out two to three feet up in there, that's raw sewage, and that's running right into the housing project. And there's little kids out there running and playing in it, and I keep wondering, when am I gonna watch this on the late news, some big television station picks up on this? Where I live, between Gaslight Village and 13th Street, this gentleman said, "Well, ago, that was the first time in about three or four weeks since the curb's been dry, there's raw sewage running down the street, that'll stretch out there from the curb out three or four feet, and you've gotta walk through that if you go right into the street." And I've seen it running down the street, it stinks. It's like I was living in Mexico somewhere. And the patching they do, we had a hole that stretched across the entire street, it was at least a foot deep by at least a foot wide, and they just did patch it the other day. But what they're putting in there, first time we get a rain...
Wash it up.
And this heavy dump truck keeps coming through there two or three times a day, that's not no solution, it's just a Band-Aid on some cancer. And something needs done, we're expected to pay taxes, and I can say, I'm a driver and be there, something needs done.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Barbara Fatschinsky, K O L P S H I N S K E. I live in 1920 Sherwood Forest, I spoke to y'all a couple weeks ago. So I want to thank you, or thank someone, that has come out and taken care of the ditch problem. Our ditch did drains, the whole street drained, it was very, very good that it came out as soon as they did. But I do have a concern, there is a portion of our road that is sinking, you know, and it's kind of scary, that this portion is sinking. So I appreciate if someone could come out and investigate that sinking before it becomes a major catastrophe.
What road is that again, ma'am?
1920 Sherwood Forest.
1920, the road itself?
Yeah, the portion of the road that is sinking.
Okay.
But thank you, thank you for everything that...
But thank you for bringing that up to our attention so we could work on it, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
My name is Russell Point, I live at 1500 Matlock, space 56. First of all, Adrian Merchak...
Yes, sir.
I thank you for responding to my email to you. Okay, all you and all of the council members, we sent pictures of the holes these people have been talking about. My question is, we had the rain, I think it was around May 10th, and last Friday is when they finally filled the holes. And you know that there's been considerable coming from me trying to get this done?
Yes, sir.
And the question I have is, I know the city has a lot of other things to do, but if any one of you would have driven down there, you would have seen what we're talking about, and you would fill it. I mean, you couldn't miss it, it went all across the road. The thing that really upset the people in Gaslight, we've been complaining about 13th and Matlock, well, I've been around this since 2004.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Now they come along and they pave Ninth Street. Now, I built Ninth Street, there were two other people built Ninth Street, there were three little puddles, that was it, but you put two inches of asphalt down that street. That did us with a slap in the face, just to show how strong and how tough you can be, and you'll do what you want to do. That's what everybody speaks. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, I don't know. I don't have a gen, I'm not speaking for anybody else, I'm speaking for myself. If Mr. Hyatt was here, he could... If Mr. Hyatt was here, he could pouch, because I've been down there two times now, and get the front-end parts for my car just because of the condition of the streets. The biggest problem that I see is the sewage. The kids from the project, of course, they have the playground of the project locked up. So when it rains, the kids are out there in the street playing in raw sewage. Now, if that's not a health hazard, I don't know what is. I mean, we know that the sewers collapsed, but we keep getting on and on and on delays as to when it's going to be fixed. I mean, every time, city manager sent me an email last month or so, "Yep, it's going to be done." Well, that time's gone past too. It seems like the district, there's no end to it. Can we as citizens believe the council as to what they tell us? It's not a current event. I'm sorry.
Right.
So it, I know you have a lot of streets in town that are bad, but when you have environmental situation like we have, that needs to be addressed first. I would think so.
Yes, sir.
I work for a power company in Wyoming. And if we had a spill like that, they would shut the unit down.
Right.
They'd take three hundred megawatts offline until we fixed it. So I don't know how the city gets away with it. I bet something different. The type of raw sewage that goes right on down, end up, con ground, end up on the environment. Okay, I'll send that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandy Leon. I live at six oh five, working Campbell Street. And I've got several things to say, though mine, first of all, the lady was saying, you know, during that storm, I missed my last meeting because I was working late, trying to help the traffic. But we had several people that worked for us live over there. They were older people. They called nine-one-one. I almost said they couldn't do it on the body. They couldn't help them out. We saw a city truck trying to go out there, burying the water. You know, I went out there, tried to help as much as I could, you know, walking. We took helping elderly people out. I don't see why, or people, cop, fire department, similar, so they couldn't do nothing, you know? I mean, they should have helped out the elderly people at least, you know, because it's hard for the elderly people to try to get out. We helped out a lot of people that morning. We got calls from friends who are live there, George Castro, all the other people calling to help. I mean, our council's done a lot more than they do, you know, than what they're going to do. The real reason I'm here today is because I have a problem with my water bill. And I don't went to everybody and nobody gave me a straight answer, so maybe you helped me out here today. My water bill's been from a hundred and ten to a hundred and sixty-six dollars. This one, my water bill went up to three hundred and something dollars, you know? It's a big difference from January. I asked for a thing. I was going, I called and asked to talk to her. They told me she was in a meeting. And it's funny, they were out there. I got off the phone with them. They told me she was in a meeting. She walks in the restaurant. I said, "Man," so I called back and I talked to her. I said, "She's still in a meeting." And she's sitting right next to me eating breakfast. I mean, come on, you know, that's, that's... It's just like I've called several times, talked to the mayor. They said, "We'll give the mayor the message." Asked the mayor, "Did you get the MetroCard ready?" Never got it. I mean, like they say, who can we trust? You know, we got two guys here. We can't trust them. Who can we go to? All of it is Donna Cox lady is either, but I know she's very rude. She works for the people of the city. Maybe she shouldn't be there because I called to talk to her. They put me to her. She's the little nut she can do. He says, "Pay your water bill." Come on. The first thing that comes out of everybody's mouth is, "You must have a leak." I guess everybody around the pack got leaks out of water that high because then from January to today, last month, my water bill's only been the most a hundred and sixty-six and jumped up this much. Something's wrong, you know?
Yeah.
We're trying to cooperate money I lost somewhere else to try and hoping people don't notice it. I noticed. I work hard for my money and I notice things like that, you know? I mean, who do I turn to to get some help for my water bill, you know? I mean, I was told I got to pay the water and turn it off. So who do I turn to to get some help?
That was just this month, Sammy?
Yes, sir. I got it right here. I didn't have time to make copies for everybody, but I got a copy from the city over here. They gave me this copy here. You want to look at it?
If you don't mind. But you were told you got a water leak?
Yes, sir. I called the city official, the gentleman over there. I got into him. He threatened to call the cops on me here at the city hall because he said I was being rude to him. And all I asked, where was he going? One day I turned my water on. I bought some property. I turned the water on and one property turned it off on the other one because I was moving out of that property and moving to the other house. And I paid a hundred and seventy-five dollars to get my water turned on. I come in from offshore. My money made to go to a football game. So I moved, after football, after football, after somebody played. I go to turn water on. I had no water. I come up here to city hall and tell them that, you know, what was going on. They weren't even a water meter. And I paid a hundred and seventy-five dollars two weeks ago when I went offshore to have the water turned on. They said they couldn't do it. So I had to hook it up myself. They gave me the stuff to look it up and I put it on myself. I had a picture of that. A young man, a little short Mexican guy, I don't know what his name was, but he said, "Look, I'm going to help you out." He came up at me in my house. He gave me the little parts we needed. He told me to vote to, I think he told me to go to Stewart. He had everything we needed to hook that pipe up. Switch it on my side of the same. I shouldn't have to do that, you know?
To Stewart?
I mean, Philip, to discount, he told me to go there. He had the parts we needed to hook that water up. You can't just hook any fitting up.
Right, right.
You know, and then the reason I got the smart meter now is because I had a problem before and they told me it was because I had a leak. So I asked them about that smart meter. And I don't know how that read, but I know the other day I was at home. There was a truck parked on the side of the road. And I asked him what he was doing. I don't know who he was.
Right.
He said, "I'm reading meters." But do y'all read meters from the road or do y'all got to go to a smart meter? How does that work?
It's all about radio communication.
It's all radio, yeah. They'll park at the end of a block and read an entire.
So how do you know which one you're reading? What meter are you reading on? Do you read your body meter?
They each have a smart chip, yes.
Something's wrong because, I mean, I've been paying water. Same people there. I'm not paying a hundred and something dollar water bill. It's a hundred and something dollar something they are. And I don't have a water.
And you're not the only one. It's the same water leak.
You know, I guess. And I've talked to several people around because it's happened the same thing, you know? Because our water bill's been, it's only certain people I guess get to a water leak. I don't know. I'm not, I noticed because, I mean, it was a big difference. I don't know who to go to. Why? He told me they put me through Donna Cox, wherever she is. And she was very rude when she talked to me on it.
What can we do to check on?
Well, this isn't Mr. DeLeon's first go-around, so he knows the protocol. Normally, we will put the account on suspense for six months. He'll pay his average. We'll investigate, see what's going on with the leak. If he already has a smart meter, then it's going to give a read as to when water's being used and how much water's being used.
I was told that's why I was going to get one. And I acted like this cop striding when I talked to her. I'll get back to you later in the day. I called her nine o'clock in the morning. I called back at, I think it was three-thirty. I said, "Mr. DeLeon, the cop's gone." At three-thirty in the afternoon.
Well, I've not spoken to Mr. DeLeon, so the normal protocol is the same thing we do for everybody who has an issue with their bill. We suspend the account. They're not subject to disconnect as long as they pay their average, which in his case, he's saying is a hundred and ten dollars. That's what he'll pay while we investigate.
How long does it take for investigations to...
It depends. If he already has a smart meter, we're going to download the data loggers and give him a daily of what water consumption has been. We've got information. I mean, we can basically, when you have a smart meter, we can basically tell you when you ran your dishwasher, when you showered, when you ran a load of laundry. The average use per appliance basically is read into the data logger.
It'll show a trend?
It will show a trend, yes.
Here you go, sir. Thank you, Senator.
And just, just for the record, myself and Dean Thomas were out at sunrise on kayaks. And we did go to, we saw nearly everybody that was up and down. We started at eight twenty-one South Commercial. We went in kayaks because it was obviously completely flooded, down to the dead end at Arch. Went around, back around to Euclid, spoke to everybody that was standing outside their homes. Dean Thomas did go up to four homes that there was nobody around. And he is in his kayak beating on windows, because that's how high the water was, to see if there was anybody in there. The three homes that we went up to, no one answered. But we did speak to tens of dozen people. We did take some stuff out of homes for people that their family was sitting over in the Dollar General parking lot. And we kayaked up over to them. So, yes, I was out there for hours that morning.
Another thing I was going to say about the trash pickup, you know, like Eagle Side, because I'm working on a house later now because of the flood that they had over there. They go by every day picking up stuff. Now, if you go to see it at the dump on Thursday, I think it was Thursday and Tuesday and Saturdays. If y'all go down on Tuesdays and Thursdays, that's what makes you the most mad because I got the cops following me about that too. Because they tried to give me a citation. I piled the trash up in my yard and it be picked up. And I was told it can't be put out there until your week of pickup, which our week is the first week of the bus, okay? Well, I drive out there to go dumping. I got to pay thirty-five dollars to dump trash. And you got that guy that's picking up trash sitting over there asleep. Okay? So why are we paying this guy to pick trash up and he's over there to dump sleeping? And I went and confronted him and Mr. Paul Wutzel confirmed this. He said, "Well, he's over there going to talk." He was sleeping. I asked him. He got mad and called the cops on me.
This is Republic Services?
Yes, ma'am. That guy that drove that blue truck with that thing to pick it up. I mean, if we're paying that guy lots of money to pick up trash, he says, "I'm done picking up trash down my route." Well, you should be somewhere else picking up trash. We're paying you to not asleep over there at the route. Am I right there?
Yes.
Yep.
And when we go to somebody that asks them, what they can't know about, I get the cops caught on because, come on, I mean, you know? That's why people around the town are scared to talk because when we go to talk, nobody listens.
Right.
Nobody cares.
Mr. DeLeon, is this the same issue that PD helped you with, with the trash?
That was the...
Or is this a different issue? Yes.
Yeah, this gentleman was out there when we called. They called them on us.
We went well out of the way.
Yes, he did. Yeah, he did. Assistant Chief of Police, they sure did.
Republic got back out there and went back and...
The reason why? Because they went over there. That's the only reason why. And I appreciate what they did when they were there that day. It was him and another gentleman. He was Assistant Chief of Police.
Mr. Perkins.
Went over there. But they called the cops on me because I wouldn't vote that guy out.
Well, he called the cops because you guys had gotten into a confrontational argument.
Because I woke you up.
That was never, that was never discussed, sir. Never discussed. You never brought that up?
No, we did.
No, you didn't. Okay.
Yes, sir. Ma'am?
I'll remind you guys, Mr. DeLeon's last issue with the water bill was girlfriend, somebody owned, somebody you guys decided not to waive the utility bill. So he's not been happy since then. They actually have an action item, so you can't comment on what they're about to discuss. They should wait for their item to come up during the agenda. Correct.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am? It's all, but people have to lean into it, I think. Right, sir? Thank you, Carol. I heard you appear and I'm recording up here, so I do apologize for that.
My name is Daniel Jimenez. I live at one forty North Arch Street. Our city budget requires a five-year capital improvement plan. And to my knowledge, that hasn't been done in years. If that had been part of our city budget, a lot of this flooding and street repairs issues probably could have been avoided or at least addressed a lot sooner than now. That's basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Take it, Dan.
A CIP budget also requires a funding mechanism, which this town has not had.
Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
My name is Stephen Warren, six one seven North Houston Street. I've got three things. I have the same problem with the water bill. I've been working with Sylvia and the water department. They have put a smart meter in. She said we would be receiving a itemized water printout. I have not gotten that yet, but I am paying my average until we get that solved. The second thing, the shrimp parade this year, I thought was really lacking. First off, the handicap parking was pretty much nailed and void. We had to walk all the way back by the park, back on the baseball fields. And then you had to walk all the way back up toward the river tracks to the little tent they had set up there to get the shuttles. The vendors mostly were all just jewelry and clothing. Didn't have much of anything else there this year. And the food vendors, there was like no grocery corner. It was just, it was very lacking what we've had in the very past. And I didn't know if y'all had been there and noticed it as well. And...
I did hear some complaints.
Yeah. And, I don't remember what you wanted to ask. I'll come back.
As far as the handicap parking, there was the usual parking that was up front. And when handicap would present to the officers at the intersection, they would either direct them...
They sent us all the way to the back.
If they filled that front, then they would direct them to the back. And they would also tell the ones that would stop. And I know because I was there on several of those occasions, they would tell them to ask for a ride because they were giving out free golf cart rides to the handicap.
And we did, but none of the people had radios to radio a golf cart back to.
They should all have had. Now, I can't, I can't attest to that, but they should all, because we did in several briefings. We even ordered more radios this time because of some of that.
None of them had a radio.
Also to note, too, the first parking lot for the Little League, all that front row leading up to the main parking lot was reserved for handicap parking as well. But we have saw some other...
When I got to the gate where they were going into the shrimp parade, where the officers first were, because you used to park right across the street into that big parking lot there.
Yeah, and we had to shut that parking lot down because of the rain. It was not drivable.
Wasn't usable at all.
No.
I mean, I seen all the motorcycles parked there, but I thought, well, that would have been nice to just, at least the very first rows there, set that up for the handicapped.
In that area for the motorcycles, that was all purchased by Harley-Davidson. That was sponsored by them. What I'm talking about on the front is if you were to turn left on Arch, that road's blocked normally. But all the fence line along that, that route was reserved for handicap. And we were constantly staying up on it.
Right before the river tracks?
On Arch and Johnson, yeah. When you, the first set of officers you would have, you would have met. When they would see a handicap placard or plate or somebody would flag them down.
I wrote my window down, asked them, and they were like, "Yeah, just go back there and just let them know. Just keep on going back." You know, it was first time for a serve, but we were there Saturday early. It wasn't a whole lot of people there.
But if that's...
And they'd send us all the way back. And I kept asking people as we'd go down over the river tracks, you know, handicap, handicap. And they took me all the way up to the baseball fields out there. And then there were some of the kids out there. And I said, "Can we get the shuttle?" And, "Yeah, you got to walk all the way up there to that tent where the little canopy is." And let them know, just stand there and the shuttle will be back out there. And I'm like, "This, this is not good." And I seen older people, you know, trying out there and they've been walking with their canes and stuff, trying to find a shuttle, which weren't...
That sounds like a breakdown in the communication with parking. And we'll definitely note that to address with them.
Yeah. So that, I mean, that's why I wanted to just let y'all know that it was, it just seemed like, I understand you couldn't park across the street because of the flooding. But the parking out there on the baseball fields, and I'm sure with the Pinia, the one that does the baseball fields, probably isn't going to be real happy when he goes, gets back out there and sees all the tire marks and stuff in the baseball fields that he leases out from the city as well, so.
Okay, I'm not sure about that. But thank you for the comments. We will share that in our post-briefing.
Oh, yeah, that's going to be a whole new ballpark. You're going to have to work it out there.
Is there anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm going to change courses a little bit. On January fourth, twenty sixteen, I received a speeding ticket in Ransus Pass.
Mr. Casey, you have to give us your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Thomas Brent Casey. I live at one oh six North Cove Harbor Drive, Rockport, Texas. I am an owner and business partner at twenty-one seventy Bypass Thirty-five South, Ransus Pass, Texas.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, on January fourth, I received a speeding ticket coming back from a Port Ransus boatman meeting over in Port Ransus, which was no big, you know, I was speeding. I was guilty and that was no problem. I took defensive driving, came down, got all the information, completed everything, and brought it back to City Hall and turned it in. When I started to leave, I was stopped. And what I give you there, I was told that it is now required by Texas law that y'all are taking FBI fingerprints for speeding tickets. I have, I have contacted various other agencies in the area. And to cover my hiding, the Texas Rangers, DPS, and I've carried it all the way to Attorney General. And I also have given copies to... The Texas Rangers, DPS, and I've carried it all the way to Attorney General, and I also have given copies to my two state representatives. And, ah, maybe it's something that I don't know, but a lot of other people didn't know about this, and, ah, I'm unaware, I just had a criminal background checked, ah, for them to have one every so often because of the type of work I do and for what I've done in the past, I hold a pretty good high security clearance. And, ah, I'm not under any criminal indictment, I'm not under any criminal investigation, haven't been arrested for anything criminal, but for some reason, here in Aransas Pass, Texas... I had my federal, federal Bureau of Investigation fingerprints done, and I know through agencies that this city, coming through their servers, are trying to find federal background out on me. Now, I am covered, and we're covered by the Fourteenth Amendment, folks, and you can read it, I'm not going to go into it tonight, but, Mr. Mayor, I'm addressing you tonight, I don't care about talking to anybody else, I'm addressing you. I'd like to know the bottom of this, why, why this occurred.
Me, too.
I, I want to know why.
This person has... Mr. Casey?
Because I will file, I am in the process of filing charges.
I'm, I'm real interested in, in who required you to give fingerprints? Who, who was it that required you to give your fingerprints?
I don't know the officer's name, I can't read the letter, when I was there, I like to say, I was getting ready to leave, and they come out and said, whoa, hold, hold on, wait a minute, but we gotta get your fingerprints, and...
Okay, so it was, it was a police officer that required you to...
Yes, it was. It was inside, over here, and, ah...
Was it a female, or...
It shocked me. It shocked me very well much, you know?
Can you tell me if it was a female or a male?
It was a female.
Okay. Sounds like my property evidence tech, she's the one that does fingerprints, so I can look into that and get you some answers.
I did not argue, I wasn't going to argue no better, too. And little boy's inside, told me to go along with it, and I've sat on it and kept, but there's some things come up in the past month that I figured I need to go ahead and bring in, because next month, I'm asking y'all tonight for an investigation, because next month, I'm coming back, I have some more things that I'm going to present, that's going to go along with this, but, ah, I'd just like to know for myself and the other citizens, I mean, this is against, this is against our rights, and, and...
Where were you when this occurred?
Where was, what?
What?
Where were you when you had, you were asked to give your fingerprints? Where were you?
I was over here in the City Hall, over here at the, the, at the Clerk County, at the Clerk, where I went back there, handed in my paperwork for doing defensive driving, I did my defensive driving, said hi, goodbye, and then just as I was leaving, whoa, Mr. Casey, wait a minute, we, we need to see you a minute. And I turned around, and they go, we need to get your fingerprints.
That's at the court, or at the PD?
PD.
At the PD?
PD. Yeah, where you, where you going to, in the back, when you come in the back door?
You were in the, you were in municipal court, and then somebody came out from the Police Department and approached you, and they didn't give you any explanation why, you didn't ask why?
They just told me it was a new Texas law, and I have called DPS, I've called the Texas Rangers, the Attorney General, and they're all wanting to know this, what is this new law that you get a speeding ticket that you get fingerprinted on?
Well, I want to know that as well, so I'm going to find out, and we'll have an answer. If you can leave your information with me when they go to break, I, I'll be more than happy to reach out to you first thing tomorrow.
All right. Yeah, he's got a copy, he's got, yeah, I mean, I...
Likewise, the council knows well.
I mean, y'all got it now, so I've Xeroxed the cost codes, they actually give me a hard copy of my fingerprints.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You got fingerprints, too?
Nope. But I remember what I was gonna say. Steve Warren, 617 North Houston Street. Ah, it's summertime again, the grass is growing again, and I'm back at it again.
Yes, sir.
Corner prior to North Houston, that empty lot.
It's taller than the...
Ways high. You seen it?
Yeah, I seen it.
So, need to try to see if we can get somebody out there and get that mode, try to find out whoever owns that property, I talked to the chief a little while ago.
Code enforcement.
Ah, he couldn't remember who we contacted last year.
It's already been addressed with code enforcement, so we'll be working on it.
Okay. Just want to let y'all know that I'm going to be on it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, people. My name is Betty Garza. 1500 West Matlock, number one. I'm number one, people. Other people have talked about our street problems on 13th and Matlock, and they addressed the holes. My concern, or my wonder, is when they do finally do the street repair, will they keep in mind that there are heavy trucks that travel Matlock? And we not only have the holes, we have the bumps. Now, the material is going to be used, will it be, will it take that into consideration to where the street, even after it's been paved, and all of a sudden, these big trucks come by, and there we are again with the same problem? So, I know we are somewhere down the line to be scheduled before the end of the year, at least that's what my angel told me, and, ah, but would you also keep in mind, Ms. Manager, that, ah, if the tree, street repair is done, that it's done to where it will last, and not to where we have to come back a year later and say, hey, folks, we got bumps?
Right.
Now, unfortunately, I said, I didn't come up here and, and tell you I had other subjects I wanted to talk about. My other concern is, um, pending disasters. This fall, last year, we had a tornado warning. I live in a trailer park.
Right.
I was scared to death because I did not know where do I go? My husband and I drove to the, ah, community center over here. Doors were locked. So, all I see is these dark gray clouds coming. Thank God, nothing happened, but what if something did? Where was my safety? And now, I know that because of the flood problems, we had, ah, a red cross over here, but what do we people, and you have a lot of trailer homes here in Aransas Pass, they're not, there's not a single sign that says disaster shelter area. Where do I go?
That's a good point.
Where do I go? I, I, I've drive up the downtown area, I'm a constant traveler, wheeler and, and commercial, and I have looked for signs, I looked at buildings, I've talked to people, and you know what someone told me? The only safe place to go to was Ingleside, Texas?
Really?
And I'm not going to tell you what building they told me, but, ah, that is my second concern. Now, my third one is kind of a silly thing, you know? I tend to be silly occasionally, but I love garage sales. Where are the garage sale signs? Now, I know we have a different code, oh, we can't have signs up, except directly in front of the home. Yeah, I live up there, off of, two streets away from the main drag, and someone's going to find my one only sign. Now, we're charged a fee to have a garage sale here in Aransas Pass.
Right.
But we're not allowed to have signs. Now, I know some people don't take their signs off, well, then, for goodness sake, if that's the problem, tell the people that have to pay the fee, you have 24 hours to take your signs down. Now, what are you doing with those fees that are being collected? Is there a patrolman that goes and looks and sees where these signs are at? And if so, then if some sign is up there 24 hours beyond their date, lo and behold, you go to that house and pay $5 fine, or whatever you want to call it. But those are three little things on my, ah, agenda. Thank you for listening to me, and, ah, I hope I don't have to come up here anymore, but do something about the garage sale signs.
I hope you do come up here.
I hope you come up tomorrow, yeah, but do something about the garage sale.
I mean, this was a good reason, but for positive outcome.
Yeah. And, and the garage sale signs, I want to go to garage sales, there's not even any in the paper, so there I am going up and down streets and nada. So, ah, you've heard me, and thank you for listening.
Ms. Garza, I, I would encourage you to register on our website, because we have a new feature called Community Notifications, and that's where you're going to find all the garage sales to your heart's content.
Unfortunately, I do not have a computer.
We have one at the senior center and at the library, free for use with free Wi-Fi.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna go to, every time I want to go to garage sale, yeah, okay.
Well, it's a, it's a Thursday habit.
Well, okay, thank you for your information.
It's a Thursday habit, you can find out what garage sales are in the area.
So, why come we can't have signs?
I see signs.
For, for the same, for the very reason you described.
I, I mean, I do see signs.
Yeah, directly in front of the house.
No, I've seen, ah, telephone poles and stuff. And as far as...
And as far as the shelter, we do not have a shelter of last resort rated in Aransas Pass. We do not have any building that is safe, no, ma'am. Even the staff has to report to Sinton. We do not have a shelter of last resort, and in terms of, um, advance notice, we do have emergency activation, code red notifications, if you'll sign up with our Police Department, you'll get not only a reverse 911 phone call, but if you have a cell phone, you'll get text messages on emergency situations.
Thank you.
Thank you. As far as the new streets, though, Bill?
I, I'm going to bring that up because you have a comment, there's a lot of comments to address on that item, so...
We're going to get it right. Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Debbie Yeltsworth, I live at 1618 West Nelson, and I own the building at 361 South Commercial. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm a board member, and I wanted to thank the city. Rosemary Vega was here tonight, but she needed to leave, she's at a conference, ah, that she had to, that she was, had left to come here to speak with you, and then seeing the time was getting away, she had to leave. Ah, we wanted to thank the city, and she'll give you the numbers on it, ah, for the support that you showed for the shrimp parade. Our city manager came out and did a cooking demonstration for us, and, ah, there were, ah, many city staff that, ah, helped with it, and we appreciate y'all. Ah, I just appreciate the com, the, um, spirit of camaraderie between the city and the chamber, y'all are very helpful. It was, we didn't have as good a crowds this year, I don't think, as we did last year, ah, but we did well, and Rosemary will give you all those figures, but I just want to say thank you. We had a headliner ban canceled on Friday.
Yeah.
For Saturday night, they couldn't get on, they couldn't get their visas in order to get here, so that did affect us, but, ah, it was a good, um, support, and you know, it's always, ah, we feel safe there because we see our, um, police just walking around, being friendly, visiting with people, but it just, ah, it just nips in the bud any trouble that we might have, and we appreciate y'all, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is the handout, the chamber left with each of you on the numbers and the attendance.
Is there anybody else? If not, that's close, our citizen comments will move on. This is going to bring us to item seven, the consent agenda, all of the final items of the consent agenda considered to be routine by the City Council will be an actual motion. There will be one, no separate discussion of these items unless council members so request. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed, the consent agenda considered separately. Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay.
Oh, wait. There was one item on the consent agenda. It was 8D...
Got to be seven, something.
Oh.
Better than the weight on the consent.
Eight's not on the consent agenda. Okay, never mind.
Would that be also just corrections to the minutes on the consent agenda?
No, minutes, minutes were up, further up.
We're talking about the consent agenda.
Well, okay, on 8D, there is a, an issue, but I guess...
Well, we haven't gotten to that yet.
We ain't got to that yet, okay. Well, then, there you go. Okay.
So, I hear, all in favor of consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. This brings us to 7-1, resolution number 2016-7...
No, sir.
Those things are on the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just...
We jumped to number eight to public hearings.
Okay. I apologize, I was just going by the numbers. Public hearings, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor, I declare a public hearing open for the purposes of taking up the application for conditional use permit for Kevin and Samantha Simone to operate a bar, lounge, or tavern at, well, it's only East Wheeler. Is either Kevin or Samantha present? Yes, ma'am, you want to come forward, please?
My name's Samantha Simon, ah, I live at 719 Lantana Street in Corpus Christi. Ah, we're requesting a conditional use permit at 208 East Wheeler to reopen the bar as a country western bar. The only concern that we had with the conditional use permit is they brought up paving the property, whereas, as you guys could tell earlier, it's a really bad flooding area there, and by paving the property, it creates five times the amount of runoff. And there's already a flooding problem there, because we're only two feet above sea level, and the prior rain, we actually had three inches of water inside our building, and the only thing that helped us was the fact that we have drains in our floors, so that helped to keep all the water down from getting worse. Um, but other than that, everything else is too satisfactory with all the other recommendations that they wanted for it.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you're objecting to.
The paving the property. I would like to keep it the crushed oyster shell that's already there. That way, when it does rain, our property does help to absorb, instead of creating additional runoff into the roads and the streets and neighboring properties.
Well, their, their requirement, or the recommendation, planning and zoning, is that the, ah, all parking must be on all weather surface concrete or asphalt.
Crushed oyster shells is actually under the category of an all-weather...
Okay. Well...
So...
She would, ah, for, this is part of a, a city ordinance that must be meant for all new businesses, not just a remodel or a new business. If she has an alternate method, her method of appeal is to the building, you know, to the zoning board of adjustment, to ask, or, I mean, the Building Standards Board, to ask for an alternate, meaner method to provide parking.
But your, your agreement to all the other conditions?
To all the other conditions, yes. We have the fence along the back property already, the lighting is directional, it's pointed down at the ground at the, where the parking is, so it doesn't affect our neighbors. Um, it is a concrete building, so it does very well at muffling the sound to our neighbors and not interfering with their life to have it there, and it has been a bar for years. Um, when I first moved here in 94, it was a bar when I was a little girl, and, um, I, the reason we're choosing to do a bar is in commemoration of my grandfather, who actually owned Club Clenzo here, that was on Commercial Street, he passed away. Um, from the time I was 16 years old, I helped him run his businesses, my husband as well as ran bars, managed bars, so we know what we're doing, it's just a matter of getting in and being allowed to open.
Okay. Any questions of the council? Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments?
I have a question on clarification of the address, is it 408 or 208?
It's 208.
Two.
Yes, it's 208.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, I would like to remind you, one of the reasons this ordinance is in place, because of the, the weight of the apparatus, fire apparatus, ah, so they have strict protocol that we only enter property that has a solid surface, this being assembly, it's a, it's actually a high hazard for us, that would mean that we'd have to park our truck at a different, you know, a further location, and that hinder, you know, kind of rescues or fire operations, and that's why, and that's why that ordinance is actually in place.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
If you can come up to my...
Come forward, please.
This is an auto poll, 1500 West Matlock, number 68, and it, it seems to me like we would be trying to encourage, um, new entrepreneurship in the city, and from what I'm understanding, there are a lot of roadblocks rather than, ah, open doors and tunnel.
All right, thank you, ma'am, anyone else?
Well, we saw the flooding, all in the name of development, so...
Ms. Saunders? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Carol Salinas, I'm a member of the...
Salinas, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm a member of the Planning and Zoning Board, and I think someone, um, would like me to make a comment, just for the...
I, I did, I wanted the, um, the... I did, I wanted the, the thought process on the eight conditions.
Oh goodness, I don't have all the eight conditions here.
Well, no, just highlighting...
The eight conditions are pretty standard, but the discussion at the P and Z meeting was over the, the parking and paving, or permeable or non-permeable surface, and flooding, runoff, and I was one of the members who did agree that there is a problem with runoff on a solid surface, but it was mentioned, Mr. Saldana told us that he thought there would be a problem with the fire department, and the unanimous vote, the board discussed it at length, and they said they felt like that a paved lot, not shell, would be preferable for looks, and it would cause runoff of the water, hopefully into a draining area, but they did unanimously vote to go with a solid surface and did not recommend the shell.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Questions of the council? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. I didn't see you.
My name's Kevin Simon, I live at seven nineteen Lantana, Corpus Christi. Let alone with, there is no drainage in the area on our side of the street, and also the road, or what is that?
North Arch.
North Arch is not paved at the current moment, and if we go in and have to pave our area, well, it's not really our place, we're just renting it out, that there's still a portion of the city that's not paved. So, we actually got somebody to come out there and look at it and ask what the quote would be, and they told us thirty thousand dollars, and we're like, okay. He told us, though, that if we had to pave this, unless the city came in at the exact same time to pave it, that it's gonna create a pond effect. Pretty much, from that point is from the boundary line of the property to the building, that if you pave just that section, the city has to pave their part, by Texas law, that it's gonna create a pond effect, and the water's gonna go into the building instead of out that way. So, unless the city is willing to go ahead and fork out, it's gonna cost us thirty grand, I can imagine what it's gonna cost the city to pave their part, plus put in drainage, plus to pave the road that's not paved on the side right now. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Catherine Como, and I'm the city planner. After the planning and zoning board approved this for your honest consideration, the owner of the property, they're wanting to rent it, the owner, Mr. Guzman, did come and he did raise the issue that there is a portion of the parking lot that is currently city-owned. Mr. Saldana and I explained to him that the options were that the city, they could petition that the city abandon the easement, the section, the parking lot the city owned, and it could be bought at fair market price. But at the moment, it would have to, if it is going to be paved, that would have to be done, because the parking lot rendering that they have done to, for the, to meet the parameters of the business, the size of the business, it would have to all be done in, in order for it to be get a certificate of occupancy.
And the parking lot rendering is done by the person wishing to open the bar. This is not a rendering the city does, it's not a rendering required, it is a number of spaces that are required to operate that bar. So, given that there's still an issue with parking, that they would have to go through another governmental body to get it approved, and given the fact that there is an abandonment issue for the actual property owner, I don't see how the council can vote on this item tonight.
All right, with that in mind, I declare the public hearing closed.
I hear a motion for table on this item.
I'm making a motion to table this item.
I second.
Ask them to pave a parking lot when the street's not paved.
Well, they're talking about the portion of the street that is on their property that they're going to be using as a parking lot.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the, is a public hearing on the approval of that of pile addition lots thirty-five R located between South Commercial and South Arch Street, north of East Danforth. Is there someone here to address that?
Rocky Chacon, twelve hundred South Houston Street, and we're looking to replat the property to thirty-five R. As the way the lots are cut up right now, they're, they kinda can't be utilized, because of course, the highway's gone through there years ago, and, and the lots are kinda chopped up, so we would like to be able to replat this as one lot.
Has the planning and zoning commission's already approved that, have they not?
Yes, sir, they have, and we've paid our five hundred and fifty dollars for the review, and we've done everything, you know, in compliance with the city, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, Kevin, Kevin and Rocky have done other business and have been successful in their replating construction.
Any questions of the council?
No.
If not, I declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you.
I hear a motion for approval?
I make a motion, we approve the plant of, I guess the, how do we wanna word that?
Replant.
The replat of the pile addition.
Lot thirty-four R.
Okay, for thirty, thirty-five R.
I second.
All in favor, say aye, thirty-five R.
Aye.
Next item under section eight is a public hearing to consider the petition by Redfish Bay Terminal to disannex eighteen point fifty-two acres located along the north side of East Beasley Avenue and east of South Arch. Tom Otter is here on behalf of Redfish Bay, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. My name is Tom Otter, I represent Redfish Bay Refinery. The property here is about eighteen point five acres. It's immediately north of approximately two hundred and fifty acres, owned by the same company, that is in the industrial district. And when we were in negotiations for the, for the industrial district, we pointed out that we would like to be able to have all of the property under the same terms and conditions, which is at eighteen point five acres, immediately north. Has nothing on it, okay? No development there, but we hope, the owners of the property hope that they will eventually be able to package the whole property and have some development there. Stand ready to answer any questions you may have. By the way, the staff has been very, very accommodating to us, both during the industrial district discussions, which went on for a long time, but they've also been very kind to us on this. I should further point out, for many years, I was a city employee in various cities, and coming here, and I have been here on several occasions, always reminds me how, what a great country we live in and what great democracy we have. Public comment is, is the epitome of democracy, as far as I'm concerned, but that was kinda self-serving, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions by the council?
Oh, I, I, excuse me. This is just the disannexation, but we need to make this subject to putting it into the industrial district. We don't want it just disannex, we want it in the industrial district. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. If there's nothing else, I'll close the public hearing and recommend the council they approve the disannexation, subject to the same property being included into Redfish Bay's current industrial district agreement.
Can we do that without being posted seventy-two hours, Adam? This has been written, is this written?
Well, no, this is just your motion for now, I mean, on the, on this disannexation, and then we're gonna amend the current agreement to include this property.
Okay. I hear a motion for approval?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the disannexation of the Redfish Bay Terminal, Inc., eighteen point five two, and do I need to make a motion to include it into...
Just include that, and that it be included then into a, in an amended industrial district agreement.
And to be included into an amended industrial agreement that we have currently with Redfish Bay Terminal. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Did you get that, Mayor? I know you did. Well, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
And Mayor, once that agreement is completed, it will come back to the council for your approval.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. Sylvia Nine.
Sorry, even I'm getting used to the new agenda. This is at the request of council and discussion for bids for fencing at the Little League and Community Park, so need council approval to release an RFP.
Well, I'll make a motion that we release a RFP for the bids for fencing Little League and Community Park.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item now, Mr. Cooper can come up.
While he's coming up here, still not sure when and where I'm supposed to have anything to say on this.
Which item, Carrie?
Eight D.
What is the item?
Consider an act, under the, oh, it's consider an act on awarding request for proposals for Community Park.
That was, that was considered, yeah, the last time.
Exactly. I just want it to be noted that at the bottom of that, it says, "A motion was made by Council Member Abrego toward the contract to RNA construction, seconded by Council Member Hyatt," and the motion carried, Choppa voting no. I also voted no both times that came up. He, RNA construction was not the high bidder, or was the high bidder.
Is that in the minutes?
And I voted no to that, both times it came up, and that's not what's stated here.
So, that's in the minutes?
It's in the minute, yeah.
So, the, you guys have voted to approve the minutes as is?
Yes, but it wasn't in the minutes, it was under your city manager items, so that's why I was waiting. Needs to be noted that I voted no both times it came up.
It's under city manager items in the minutes, in, in the language that she...
I wish it would be approved of the minutes, if we're getting them.
Approval of, okay.
I wish it would be, we reported it after the back.
Well, they already voted.
Well, it just...
Well, it would, it would seem to me that, Mayor, when we get through everything else, if you want to, at some point in time, go back to the, to the matter of the minutes, and Carrie can speak her piece, and the council can approve the minutes, subject to that change.
Okay. We can do that prior, go on in the second session?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry about that, Mr. Mr. Cooper.
Hi, my name is Amy Cooper, and I live at six oh five West Matlock, and I'm here to talk about my water bill.
Hi, my name is Quincy Cooper, and I live at the same address, six oh five West Matlock, to discuss our high water bill. Just like previous people have mentioned before, they've had problems with high water bills in the past. To, let me start off, let me clarify something that was said on troubleshooters last week when it aired, that Sylvia mentioned, we, or I, they have heard previous leaks from us before, okay? That leak that Sylvia was referring to happened probably about a year ago, and it was well before the smart meters was installed in our house. And with that leak that she was referring to, I never came up here and talked to Sylvia about it, nor did I come up here to City Hall and tell someone about it. What happened was that I talked to my neighbor, Sid Vireal, who works for the city, we were having a private conversation on his porch, I think we might have been drinking a beer at the time, just talking, and I said, I mentioned at that time I had a leak in my shower, okay? Like I said, that was prior to the smart meter put in in January, and we fixed it. Needless to say, I won't be having any more conversations with Sid Vireal, who works for the city. Now, getting to the issue at hand, my wife will pass out copies of our water bill and the findings that we had. Now, now in January, the new smart meters was installed at our house. Our average bill always ranged from eighty-five dollars, maybe go a little bit more, you know, up to ninety bucks. It's just me, my wife, and my daughter that lives in that house, okay? My wife works full-time, my daughter was going to school full-time, I was the only one at home. So, sometimes, you know, I would use the water during the day while I'm at home, no big deal. But as you can see, my first bill that I received was ninety-three ninety, ninety-three dollars and thirty-three cents, okay? This was a bill that we thought, hey, it exceeded our, usually our average of eighty-five dollars a month, but we knew we had a little water leak, which started, I say the water leak probably was mid, mid-February to late February, so we knew we had a water leak that probably ran two, three weeks. And it, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, it was just a drip. The water leak itself was a drip on our outside faucet that only required packing and a lubricant to fix. Very small water leak, but yet, and still a water leak, and approximately two, three weeks. Okay, so our next bill was two hundred and sixty-one. At that point, we were like, hey, hold on, you know, we got a leak, why is our water bill still high? We, 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 we talked to the JP, the guy that works up at front, and he explained to us that, yeah, what happened was, your water bill probably got caught between two cycles, which we understand, so we paid the two sixty-one, and that following month, in March the twelfth, it was, we fixed that water leak. We fixed it completely, no more leaks, okay? Our water bill for April, oh, and let me add that, he did say that the city bills a month behind, okay? So, we said, okay, yeah, we understand that, the bills are coming in a month behind, so that following month in April, it was four fifty-eight. Now, we knew at that time, we hadn't fixed a bill from when they had first read the meter from two seven to three oh eight, but we still felt that that was extremely high for just a small drip. So, what, we decided that we could still pay our average of eighty-five dollars a month that we normally did, until we can kinda figure out what was going on. He told me, give him some time, they will run a test where they'll hook up the computer and get the printouts, the graphs, and so forth, to show our water consumption, what days it's leaking, the, how many gallons were used, and so forth, okay?
That's, that's the chart on the screen.
Right, okay, right, exactly. So, we, we noticed that the following month, the bill still went up to seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the month of May. Now, we do realize we didn't pay the four hundred and some odd dollars from the previous month, we only been paying our average, which I think we paid for about, well, the last five months, we've been going through this.
It wasn't an additional seven hundred, it was cumulative, because I hadn't paid the four hundred from the month before.
Right.
So, the bill itself was still in the three hundred dollar range.
Right, right. But from March the eighth to four oh seven two sixteen, in between those times you guys read the water meter, we had fixed the leak. Like I said, we fixed it on March the twelfth, and it was just some packing and lubricant that we needed, bought at Fowler's Lumber, knocked it out. Small little drip, small little leak, no problem. So, we know that there was still previous amounts of money that we didn't pay from the past, but after that, you can see that the bills kept piling up, and on our last bill we received, it said that we owed three hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty cents from, for the month of April the eighth to five eight two sixteen. Now, we understand there was back pay, you know, from the previous months that was keep piling up, that would have made it a total of over eleven hundred dollars. And what we can't understand is, when we fixed that leak, why was it still saying that our, this past water bill was three sixteen, when it should have already gone back down to eighty-five dollars? That's when I contacted troubleshooters, they came out here and ran an episode last week, I gave our side of the story, the city gave their side of the story. Sylvia suggested to Mr. Andy Liscano that the Coopers need to hire a plumber to see what's going on, 'cause the city is showing that we have a leak still, okay? That following Wednesday, Roderer Ruder contacted me and offered their services me and offered their services for free. They said, "Mr. Cooper, we would like to help you. We saw your, your story that aired on Troubleshooters, we would like to offer you our free service to come out and run a pressure test to see if you guys have a leak or not." So we agreed to it. They came out that Wednesday afternoon, I guess it was, and ran a test. The tests that they ran lasted for a little over forty-five minutes. They put up the gauge, pressured it, ran it for forty-five minutes, absolutely no leak at all. They didn't find that one single leak. But yet, when I took that information, that following morning to Donna Cox on Thursday, she suggested that we were still having a leak and that we were still responsible for eleven-hundred dollars. Now, we understand we might be responsible for a little bit or some, but there's no way it could be eleven-hundred dollars when our last month is showing that our bill was three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, and it should have already gone back down to the eighty-five dollars once we fixed the leak in March. So, we would like to know, why is our bill, you know, that high?
One of those days on our chart, it shows that we use six-hundred gallons of water in one day.
Six-twenty, six-twenty.
When that leak was going, it was showing a hundred, a hundred-seventy to a hundred-ninety, you know, small number. But on one certain day, it was showing six-hundred gallons of water, or over six-hundred gallons of water. I would have to fill at least, what, six-fifty gallon buckets of water, or barrels of water? Come on. Six-hundred gallons in one day, I don't even have a swimming pool. And there was other days also that it was registering four-hundred, three-hundred. I mean, it's just me, my husband, and my daughter. I'm at work all day, she's at school all day. That's all I'd like to say.
Now, like I said, we know that that might be some back pay, you know, because we were paying at eighty-five dollars a month, but our water bill should have went back down to eighty-five dol-, uh, our water bill should have went back down to the average of eighty-five dollars once we fixed the leak.
Right.
And even though you subtract what the balance was being carried over, it was still showing a higher than normal, normal bill.
Well, how would that explain, Sylvia?
And on this last, this last month, this last month from four-eight to five-eight that they billed us, they said we used twenty-seven thousand gallons under usage of water, and it said the previous water meter read at nine-seventy-four, and the current was twelve-forty-four. Now, I remind you, the leak was fixed March the twelfth, so why is it still showing these outrageous numbers is, is, is our question. Why? Why? And why is it showing that the bill for that month should have been three, was three-sixteen-thirty, instead of the eighty-five dollars that it should have gone back down to once we fixed our leak?
You good too?
Yes. You guys have a copy of everything? You guys have a copy from Rota Rooter showing that there was no leak? And may I also add, when I came up to the City Hall that Thursday after Rota Rooter left and talked to Mrs. Cox, she still suggested that it's showing we have an intermittent leak. After I showed her and gave her a copy of what Rota Rooter just came out the day before saying that we don't have a leak. So I can understand how's the city on one point saying we have a leak, but a professional plumbing company came out to my house and said, "No, we don't have a leak." So something is just not right. We just want to get to the bottom of it and find out what's going on.
Donna will be going just off the readings, right?
Donna's just going off the readings. I, I, well, there's a couple of inconsistencies in the story. Was the leak fixed last year? Was it fixed in March? So, we've been going back and forth. We've been going back and forth.
No, no, no.
Secondly, okay, the meter's been removed, the meter's been tested, you see the usage, you see the flags that show intermittent leak. You know, the staff has no reason to go out and adjust a meter. There's nothing specifically against Mr. Cooper. He did talk to Sid about having a leak in the shower, how do I fix it, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know what was said over beers, but the, the meter, they're radio meters, they're automatically reading. There's no need for the city to try to lie about what needs to be collected or what was used at all. We have people who have daily consumption rates, some, we have a lot of water theft in this town. I'm not saying that's what happened to the Coopers, but we have folks who have this area as a second home who lock their water meters because there are people who use it. We have folks whose water hoses people don't even know are connected. I don't know exactly what happened to the Coopers, but the meter is the meter, the meter is the meter read. We don't have a dog in the fight as staff. It's up to the council to waive it. My comment to the council was, number one, we pay for every drop of water that we purchase from the San Patricia Water District. And the, the other effect of, you know, that's, this is what we deal with when we deal with Mr. Cooper. I appreciate the fact that they're being civil here, but, I mean, that's clearly what's on the screen and what's in your packet is really not the behavior when you're dealing with city staff.
I don't work for the city. I can say whatever I want on public, on a public forum, whether social media, Facebook, Twitter, whatever it is, I can say whatever I want. I'm not employed by the city.
Correct.
I can say whatever I want and how I feel.
I got a question, Sylvia, on the, how much do we pay for water?
Uh.
The city for, because we get charged from, they deliver to us to here, right?
It's about two to three million dollars, depending on usage.
How do we keep track of what we're actually?
There is a main, there is a main meter at, near twenty-seven-twenty-five, that has, that has all of the incoming water into the town. We had the same issue with Gulf Marine. There was consistency as to usage, and we compare what comes in and what is used, and there's no outrageous spikes, there's no issue.
What kind of meter do we have? Is it a radio meter, or is it?
The large meter is a manual meter, because the numbers are in the hundreds of thousands. And that's, that's a bill that we receive from San Patricia Water District, so they're, they're reading that mil-, that bill pretty consistently.
I got a question, I know for far chief where you can answer, but when we're testing fire hydrants and we're letting water go, how do we keep track?
There's a meter, there's a meter.
Do you have a meter on it?
When, when contractors?
It's not metered, but we run the calculation, I do a test for flow, so what I do is I run it to Public Works, to Fernando directly, and give them a monthly report of what our water use was, and everything from training, fires, testing hydrants.
There's a calculation, yeah. Um, Mr. DeLeon, this, this, you can, Mayor, could you call the meeting to order, Mayor? No, well, he needs to come up to the comment. There's Robert rules of order.
I'll come up here because, number one, when they're throwing the water, they don't have a meter on there, and they're just steadily running water. They sit in their fire truck, I seen it the other day, they're sitting in the fire truck letting that water meter run. How they, how can you guess how much water you just wasted? You can't guess them with that, or I'm gonna guess how much I wasted.
There's a mathematical calculation, Mr. DeLeon.
I wanna assure you, it is not a guess. It's, we, we run multiple tests, we do packets of twenty of them, and then we'll do the average of what those twenty are averaging per test hydrant. Some of them open in twenty seconds, we're averaging twenty seconds to about a minute and ten. So what we did is, we, we get a bunch of them, we're getting PTO gauges, we got static residual pressure, because the water I'm losing off a two-inch man and off a six-inch man, they're different. So with that, I give you a general average of what it is per hydrant.
Ms. Milton, Ms. Milton, can you come up to the, can you come up to the podium, please?
Today, they're draining these fire hydrants and testing them for the pressure. So when I came out to kill some weeds, I saw the, that two-million-dollar pumper truck down there, just sitting, and they had the water hydrant open in front of my studio. So I thought, my God, is my studio on fire? Went down there, and they were bleeding the fire plug, okay? I asked the gentleman, which was very courteous and nice, I said, "Please, point that water out towards the street." Last year, when they did this, they flooded, and I have, my, my property is sixty by a hundred-and-eighty. Only I have ten feet behind my property that's mine. Anyway, they, I said, "They knocked my fence, they washed my fence out." And I'm by myself, I can't afford to hire everything done that the city's screwing up, is, I had to get out there and replace my fence myself. So that was my purpose, to go down there and ask them. And the boy said, "No, we might cause a wreck." Well, the whole front and half, a fourth of the front was flooded, again. So today, I have called Public Works three times, finally got ahold of a gentleman, he was quite courteous. I left a message before he called me back. I said, "I get sand in my kitchen sink." And I said, "I've asked three times now for this fire plug to be drained, because I'm on, I'm the last waters on Aransas Pass." So anyway, he said he'd send somebody out, so I thought, well, I'll walk out there and warn my neighbor, because it's between he and I. Well, I saw this water hydrant just spewing everywhere. Nobody around. I got in my car and drove down there. Nobody around. But they did have a deflector on it, and it was going into that vacant lot. So I came back in, because he told me it'd be ten minutes, and somebody'd be out there to take care of my plug. Well, I came back in and called him, because nobody was there watching that plug. So, anyway, I came back out to go meet a customer and saw a, a black four-door car and a Public Works worker. I figured it was, that's what it was. So, I drove down there, the man was coming from the fire plug, he had turned it off, getting back in his car. When do our city workers drive their own cars?
Quite often, quite often.
Well, I hope the city is, insurance is covered on that.
We are named as additionally insured.
So anyway, I asked him, I said, "Now, because most of these people here that are working do not know where these lines are, because Billy is, and the attorney, well, all of them sitting out there are old timers, and they could probably tell you more than our city crews could tell, and I'm not running them down. It is their leader that needs to know where these lines go." And so he told me, he said, "It's five o'clock, I'll try to be back tomorrow." So I'm still getting, and if my hot water heater plugs up with sand, which is seventy-five gallons, because you can't just go to Lowe's and so forth and buy one, the city will buy me a hot water heater.
Chief Cox, you want to address, you want to address the?
Yeah, I can address several of those points. First off, let's separate this into the roles of Public Works and the roles of the Fire Department. So when we came out, we were, indeed, we were testing hydrants today, and I remind you that that hydrant was open no more than one minute. Captain Brago actually updated me of, of talking to a citizen today, you know, about, about this, this exact incident, and said that he thought he came to a common ground. So then when she calls to say, "Hey, I'm at the end," that was Public Works that is actually opening up, and it sounds like to me that they were, you know, they were providing some customer service to her. She says, "Hey, I need the flow and make, make sure that it flows," and that's exactly what they were doing. The sand is, you know, it's kind of a, a greater good, you know, it's a, it's a double-edged sword. So we gotta get this, you know, while there'll be some sand, we put out a PSA, letting people know, if you do happen to notice that, because you're on a dead end where it's gonna be most predominant, to open up the faucet on the outside till it runs clear, and then it'll, you know, the worst you're gonna see of it is, is sometimes it'll be, you'll notice when you wash clothes, it could stain your clo-, your linen. But with, you know, with that being said, if they, we don't do these tests, if we don't do the hydrants test, if we don't flow like the Public Works did today, that eventually her line's gonna be stopped up, not just her hot water heater. Then she's gonna be without water, and then nobody will be here in City Council going, "Why wouldn't you flush in my lines?" So, you know, it's just one of those, you know.
It's also, it's also TCQ mandate.
Absolutely.
That we flush water. Otherwise, water is stagnant, it sits, and we'll have a water boil notice, so.
And I've tasked, you know, the, the fire crews with testing these hydrants, you know, and I'm here to, you know, admit that they've not been tested in a long time. I came in here and we looked at, so we could grease the wheels, and one of those was that when I asked how many hydrants we have, I'm not too sure, you know, and, you know, what size do we have, you wanted to know. So, well, let's find that, and that's what we're working diligently on every single day.
But we guessed though, what we're, what we're letting?
No, sir, it's not a guess, it's a calculation.
Well, you got a calculation.
It's a calculation, it's.
We're actually using very high, you know, we're using PTO gauges, so we put it in the stream, I'm getting measurements of what it is, then we have a test hydrant. It's not actually moving water, we have a cap on it. So I have a static pressure and a residual pressure, so I see what that pressure change is on the other side, and that lets me know what the capability of that hydrant is. So, we open it up, get that PTO gauge, it shuts right back down. Seventeen turns on, seventeen turns off, that's all it takes. We do leave them open a little bit longer. If we notice sediment, we need to clear it out. We don't want that in the apparatus, and it's, it's what we need to do for the city to clear those lines out.
So then, whatever we do, you're supposed to begin for?
Actually, I've got, on that new software that you have, I've actually added Fernando as one of the, he has a parameter, so we do work orders for the hydrants. If I want it's out of service, it needs repair, something that's in the realm of Public Works, he actually has access now to go and look at that and see what needs to be done, what hydrants. Add a, add a couple clicks, he can see which ones are out of service, which ones, you know, got some rusted bolts, and that's what we're trying to capture. And it's everything from who made the hydrant, what year it was put in. We're capturing data that's, you know, that's, as we said, it's never, it's not been there. We're trying to, we're trying to fix that.
Part of like a separate program or maximum type thing?
The ER's program that, that we brought in just a few months ago, and we're actually gonna do an add-on, you're gonna hear, consider an act here shortly for it.
The, the city pays our own water bill, we pay our own utility bill, we pay our own electric bill, yes.
Mayor, you're, you're completely off the agenda.
To get back to that point about the leak that we had previous that Mr. Sid Vireal mentioned to either Sylvia or to Donna Cox, but Donna Cox was the one who mentioned it to me that that's how she learned about it. My point on that was, that was before the new smart meters was installed, and also, even with that leak, our water bill didn't get extremely high like it's been since the new smart meters have been installed. Also, I would like to ask Mr. Samuel DeLeon if he can bring up his last month's bill up here? Because mine shows that I, or the city's showing that I use twenty-seven thousand gallons of ga-, of water for, from April to May, and Samuel, can you bring yours up? Because his is showing the exact same thing. Now, don't you think that's a little odd? Did you guys, you guys got, you guys have a copy of mine. I'm gonna show you what his says also. Twenty-seven thousand. Don't you think that's a little odd for two people to be having the same water usage? And, well, they're not here. There's other people that I've talked to that said the same thing, but unfortunately, I guess they couldn't make it to the City Council meeting.
Sylvia, our water lines on the city side of the meter, they're good, right?
Not, not all. It depends on which side. What the meter is reading is water that's actually flows through the meter. What actually goes through the meter.
Can I say something? I talked to an official in Ingleside, because they got the smart meters too, and I asked the same question I ask here. Do you, are you supposed to go to the meter and check it? Yes, you are. As a matter of fact, the gentleman showed me how they read those meters. He gets off his truck and he points it directly to the meter. Because I asked him about the guy that was here, he was parked at the, at the end of the alley, and he said he was reading all the meters. How can you read all the meters like that if you're not going to directly to each meter? What meter are you reading?
Samuel, I, I can tell you that the AEP, they read the meter the same way. They stand at, they park at one corner, and they read all the meters that are on that. They just drive.
Well, how come Ingleside said you have to go?
There are different technologies for water reading. There are different technologies for water reading. There are readers that, if you have an antenna, we could put an antenna up on the water tower and never send out another meter reader again. Technologies differ. I don't know what technology Ingleside has, but it sounds like it's a little less advanced.
So, I, you know, I just know, it's not just the city, because I just know that they, they just read, probably about five years ago, they went into, that's how they read the reader. So, they used to go, just like the city used to go to every meter, that's how they used to read the, the light bill also, go to every meter.
I know, because it was, now it's all.
Right, so, so it's a kind of, they park on the side, or sometimes they don't even go. They just pick it up, depending on the technology, and this is what they, so it's not that they've got the capability of registering.
Every time we call the city, it's always, it's always the people's fault, it's never the city, you know? You ask them to go check it, and, well, we're busy, we'll get to it when we can, and.
No, no, we're, we're here.
We never get, we never get the straight. We never get, we never get the straight answer from a lot of...
No, we're hearing what you're saying. We just need to make sure that either, what we're looking at is either you pay the water, and whether you don't pay the water, we're gonna have to pay the water. So everybody in the city is gonna have to pay the water, because somehow or another, the water is being used. Whether you're using it, or, or somebody else. If, if we say, okay, don't pay the water bill, we're still gonna have to pay that water bill.
You know what's funny is that people don't, are scared to come up for the talk, because we always get threatened. Because I was told, it's best for you to walk out of my office, you don't pay, make my paycheck. Let me tell you what, everybody that works for the city has paychecks because of people that pay taxes.
That's true.
Okay? So we shouldn't be told that. We should be sat down, we can, we should be able to go and talk to you, and you should be able to give us an answer and say, "Well, get back to you." Not be a smart aleck about everything you'll tell us. And she's always, and hang up the phone, she's always making smart remarks about everything everybody says, you know, and that's not right. She's supposed to be representing the city, she's the city manager, but she's always making stupid remarks to everybody, everything about the says. And it shouldn't be like that.
Okay, we're not...
For example, she pulled up my Facebook account.
I mean, she shouldn't do that.
How unprofessional is that?
Yep.
I don't work for the city, I can post whatever I want. How, how dumb does that look for your city manager to pull up someone's Facebook account? Is she not representing the city?
She lets us know what we're dealing with.
What's that, Bill?
Okay, let's get back to the...
Okay. Yeah, we'll get back to the issue.
We need to get back to the issue, okay?
Right.
So what, what are you asking us to do? And that's what, because I, we need to go on, because we have a lot more agendas.
Exactly.
We need to get forward.
I'm asking you guys to investigate, and I know we don't owe $1,100 in a water bill. We might owe some, but I know it's not no $1,100. Especially when Ms. Donna Cox stated that we're still showing a water leak after Roderuter saying that we, we don't have a water leak. And our bill is $300 for this past month, when it should have been down already to $85 the month prior. So something is not right. Something is not right. I'm asking for the City Council to investigate and find out what's going on, or I have to go. I did go to help. I, I called the FBI and asked for help. I called the FBI last week and asked for help, because I thought there's public corruption going on in this town. Way too many people are having problems. Not just with water bills, but from what, from other things I've heard so far. Now, I don't know about those other things, but we're dealing with the water bill. And I asked the FBI for help with my water bill.
Well, I know one thing, sometimes it could be a toilet flapper. Where I work, we make our own water. One toilet was, you know, the flapper stayed up all weekend.
Right.
We drained about 25,000 gallons of water from a toilet flapper. So, you know, a little leak adds up over time.
Exactly, and...
If you're not calling you a liar, like you're not calling me all the rain got spread. But I just want to say, that's one thing to look at.
Right. And our toilet is, our toilet is less than two years old, so that's not the case.
Well, if, if the, you know, like the toilet's going...
That's not the case, our toilet is not going.
Listen to me. Sometimes if it's, if it's not, if it's clapped all the way, it's not gonna show an intermittent leak.
I understand what you're saying.
The handle might get caught on the lid. There's, there's things happen. And I'm not, you know, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything wrong. I'm just saying, from the experience I've had, we've dumped 25,000, 30,000 gallons of water over a period of a weekend, just from one toilet malfunctioning. And where I work, we don't have, we don't have city water. We make our own water, we generate our own electricity, and it's very important. And we always check, and I check toilet handles every time I walk by one. And we've probably got about 50 toilets on that place.
I understand that, and that's a business compared to a small, single-family house. What, one restroom, three bedrooms, three people living in it. 700 square foot.
One toilet.
I understand that, but our toilet is... Exactly. And our toilet is less than two years old. We'd spread, we got it from Lowe's less than two years ago, so we don't have that problem. We don't have that problem.
I just find it odd that your bill is identical to Mr. DeLeon's.
Don't you find that very odd?
Yeah, they live on the same block, right?
And we, I live on 605 West Matlock. I'm not even for sure what block Mr. DeLeon live on.
Not in front of me.
I'd like to see my bill. Now, I don't know what my bill says. I know it was 300 something dollars.
Well, Carrie, water lines going into homes are pretty standard, and fixtures in homes are pretty standard. So a leak is a leak is a leak, pretty much, unless you have an oversized toilet, or you have some other extra-large fixture, or perhaps a tankless water heater. There'll be some difference. But for the most part, the utility bills are standard.
So I can't understand why is Mrs. Cox still saying, as of Thursday of last week, we're still, there's, we're still showing a water leak, when Roderuter said that there's no water leak?
I, I can't speak for Donna, because she's not here.
She's, that's true, she's not here. But she said she was gonna relay everything I told her that Thursday to you.
You got the chart, right?
This, this is the chart that you have up on the screen that's in front of you.
And if it was a steady water leak, all those lines would be the same size. They wouldn't be high, low, low, then high, and so on.
Those are, those are daily usages, which is why the flag shows intermittent leaks, because intermittent means it's not happening all the time.
We don't have no leaks in her house, though.
As of March...
As of March the 12th.
What act, what action can we take as a council?
You can waive the entire past due bill? And, and that was explained to them, that they need to come to council to do that, because neither Donna and I, neither Donna nor I have the authority to do that.
Mr. and Ms. Cooper, I saw your half there.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Sylvia, I saw you, you got on behalf of the city.
Mm-hmm.
Do I hear a motion? Just put the Coopers back to their average, and the city, whatever, it's open.
I second the motion.
You can't make a motion.
You gotta make a motion.
I'll make a motion, and I'll make the motion to...
What is the motion?
To waive their extra fees.
Give us the dollar amount.
Put it back to 86 bucks.
Well, we can't, well, we can't say 86 bucks, because we don't know what it's reading now. I know that in the past, they've said that the old meters we had were not measuring correctly.
Who said that?
I mean, because I know myself, on my, on my old, when they replace it with a smart meter, the reading is different, because the old meters, we were losing a lot of water.
Oh, okay.
And the city was having to pay for it.
Okay.
The customers were not paying for it.
Right, the city was paying for it.
Okay, so the new meter is not going to be $89. This is gonna be reading a little bit more accurately now.
A little bit more accurately, okay.
Accurately, it should be more accurate. So it's not gonna be 89.
Right.
What I, I don't, go ahead and say what you're wanting to, what your motion is.
I make a motion that we give a general estimate of $100 a month, and base it on $100.
So that's a motion to waive $700 in past due?
And that's what it comes out to, yes.
I don't think that gives the Coopers, they would be due, what, what did you pay in March?
We've been pa, we've been paying $85, or just our average, since, uh... Since 4/15 of 2016, when we received the bill for $458. That is when we just started paying our average.
What's your bill for, what's your bill for April, 4/58? And your bill for May?
Yes, I can tell you, for me and my husband, there's only two.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
And we pay $98, just two.
Just two.
Just two. And I wash probably about four or five loads.
How, how many, four or five loads a week? We wash about once a week.
Okay, you know, so mine is, that, you know, that, that's just what I, you know, is mine. So it's not going to be that, that I can tell you is not gonna be 80 something dollars.
Right, that's fine. It's not gonna be $85 no more because of the new smart meter. But it shouldn't be $316, and me and Mr. DeLeon shouldn't have the same water usage of 27...
We're just talking to you, okay? We're just talking with you.
Okay. But I think it's odd, though.
If you're gonna waive the bill for the month of, uh...
March, February to March.
That is a bill of 374.59 plus 458.92, less $15, because they're paying an average of 85. So 458.92, 374.59 is 833.51, less $30. There, what you would waive is 803.51.
Then it goes just to the normal readings after that, correct?
Depends on their usage.
Because you're going by their old bill, right? Before the smart meter?
Right.
80 something dollars?
Right, we were going by our old bill.
Well, Carrie's motion was an average of $100.
We were going by our old bill before the smart meters were installed. Yes, ma'am, sure.
I'm gonna have a motion, so. Back down for me, tell me what you say.
803.51. 803.51.
803.51.
That's what you're gonna waive.
That's what I'm gonna waive.
That's what your motion is.
Yes.
And then it'll just be after, reading after that, correct? Whatever comes up, usage or whatever.
They have a smart meter now.
It could be whatever.
It, it's whatever the bill usage is going to be.
I just don't want to get another bill for the following month, stills, you know, basically saying 300 something dollars, when, you know, we know we don't waste that much gallons of water. That's what I'm worried about. Getting the following month's bill, and it's gonna say 300 something dollars, when our average used to be $85. I understand the new, the new meters are different, I understand that. But from 85 to 300 is just too much of a difference.
Their meter has been changed out again, so the meter, the meter read should be accurate. The use is the use is the use.
Okay, and if the meter has been changed out again, which it was at my request to Mrs. Donna Cox, so why is she still telling me that that new meter that just got changed out is still leaking, when Roderuter said it wasn't no leaks?
The meter that we sent out to test did not show any deficiencies. It did not show that it was wrong, it was bad. There have been accounts where the usage shows high, we pull the meter, the meter has a deficiency. We go back, we credit the account, we adjust. There are meters that are bad. We send them off to test. We have a company that tests meters. Your meter did not come back bad.
Okay, but she was referring to the new meter that just got placed in, that it was still showing a leak, when Roderuter said it wasn't no leaks.
What you, what I would recommend, does, does he have a way of reading his water meter?
You can call for daily reads, yes.
You can call daily, see what your water usage is.
Okay.
Daily, so you can keep a tab of what's going on.
Actually, we can send it to an, yeah, we can send you a, a daily email that shows your usage per hour.
That sounds great, yes, that definitely sounds great.
Because I know we can't continue waiving.
I, I understand that, I understand that, yes, ma'am, yes.
I mean, I'm paying your water bill, like, we're gonna waive you.
I understand that.
If the council votes that way, we're all gonna pay your water bill.
Mayor, you have a motion to waive $803.61, as I understand.
51 cents.
51 cents.
I second.
Motherfucker, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You oppose? All right, let's get this over with.
So I would get a up-to-date bill, then?
I, I don't know how they...
How, how's the city gonna handle that, from this last bill?
We're gonna go in and credit the account and issue a new bill.
And issue a new bill, okay, in the mail, all right. And I will leave my email address to you or to the front office, so I can get the...
We need to register your utility account online, so we have a record of your utility bill, because it's gonna be an automated email that's generated.
Okay, and I go to the city website to do that?
Correct.
Okay, that sounds great.
And keep an eye on the, the usage.
Yes, ma'am, sure will.
Keep an eye on it, okay?
I, I definitely will. I definitely will keep an eye on the usage. So, Mayor, the waive was, what, 800 and...
803...
803.51.
50 something, right?
51.
All righty, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Still got a couple hours. This is pretty good, it's tied on the 11.1 Public Works RFP request. What I missed on?
Nope, you missed nine point, the last one under nine. Stormwater improvements on 13th Street.
Correct, that is an RFP. This is the 13th Street discussion. The most, I don't know if most of the folks on 13th Street have left. These are actual pictures of the 13th Street drainage and some of the collapse of the water lines. The issue is not simply to go in and fix the street. The entire underground drainage system is... It's on, it's on the revised agenda that you were sent.
No, I didn't. This is the one I picked up from the PD.
Correct, I sent you an email afterwards, before 7:00, that there was a revised agenda, and you asked who the bidder was.
Yeah, you said it was in the revised agenda, but I never received it. I just have...
It, it, the link, you had to click on the link to go to the revised agenda.
Yeah, I clicked on the link, but I don't have the paper copy. That's why I didn't read it.
So the, uh, the drainage impact is more than just going in and fixing the street. The, fixing the potholes are temporary measures until the underground can be addressed. Council tabled this item last month when it was presented, because, again, the drainage system is not a complete comprehensive drainage repair. It is simply addressing the drainage along 13th and Matlock. And at that point in time, it was prior to this flood, the council wanted a bigger drainage basin to be researched, because, again, what we're repairing is simply repairing the current situation. It's not planning for any future growth or development in that area, any increased runoff. The, um, the bid is from J.J. Fox, and it is, uh, 182,043. The amount that's budgeted from the city is $135,000, and that's from residual savings from the last bond issuance. Our discussion with J.J. Fox, and this is simply the stormwater repair. This is not the street repair. This is the stormwater repair and some associated manhole repairs. There are manholes that have completely collapsed and cave in from the weight of the water. In this area, there are still old clay manholes. You know, things don't last forever, and this is a prime example. So the bid for 182 is simply doing some drainage. We have shaved this off and believe we can get to the $135,000 price point. I'm expecting a revised bid from Tommy, a revised addendum. However, I don't want to wait any longer. Tommy is working at the far end of Houston Street on some additional cave-ins, and is ready to mobilize in this area as early as tomorrow. So what I'm asking the Council is to approve the 182. At the next agenda, you will have a revised lowered quote that shows some items that city staff will be taking care of. Once the drainage is repaired, then the city will go in and do the street repair. And we'll do the street repair using the eight-inch base that's required by code. We'll use, we'll zip what's there, and then also use harbor material, and then the two-course asphalt. And it does take it to the Matlock intersection. It does do that one-block area of Matlock.
Would it be the one of the projects, too, or not?
Here's, the projects are private streets.
The private streets were city utilities, though?
Yes, they're private streets. There was a, um, a discussion that they turned those over to the city. They did that at a board action for the Housing Authority. There was never a council action accepting those streets. They've always been private streets. The public utilities under them are public utilities in a private street right of way, similar to what you find in, uh, yeah, the other, mm-hmm. So that is a description of everything J.J. Fox is going to do. Again, this is only taking care of current issues.
When I make a motion that we accept the bid of J.J. Fox Construction for $182,043.00 for the 13th Street storm.
It may be cheaper, right, so?
It is, it is going to be cheaper, but the savings will be, will be reprogrammed into the street base. And I will remind the Council and let the folks at 13th and Matlock know, 9th Street was done as a portion of my AP. Ninth Street was a, what we call a yellow street, in the course of grading the streets, red, yellow, green, green being it's a fine street, we even have an orange, it's a paper street and never existed. The equipment is fairly new, and staff is getting accustomed. Ninth Street was an easy repair to do in the my AP area with relatively little cost, so it was an opportunity for staff to practice on the machinery, clean up an area, and, and the folks in the my AP area are very happy. So, we have the equivalent number of folks happy, and the equivalent number of folks, uh, not happy. So, in any event, staff will do the Thirteenth Street repairs.
So, ball of affairs, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we don't have nothing more on nine, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
This brings to eleven point one?
That's the privacy fence around the Public Works Service Center. It is required as a part of the zoning code that a solid screening fence be installed against, um, incompatible uses. So, we have an industrial against a mobile home use.
We're just going with the wood fence, or?
It will just be a wood fence, yes, even though the folks have requested a solid stucco masonry fence, the funds are just not available to do that.
Do I hear a motion for approval? Eleven one. Is it, or is there any questions from Councils?
Well, I make a motion that we issue the request for a proposal for the fence at the Public Works Department.
Okay. Ball of affairs, aye?
Aye.
Aye. This brings us to item fourteen one.
Thanks to Mayor and Council, try to make this, uh, quick, this is stats, uh, for the month of May two thousand and sixteen. Uh, we had a total of twenty-eight hundred forty-four calls, there's the breakdown of those calls. I don't believe that this, uh, published online, but I will get this published online, uh, later on. I'm talking about on the website for anybody else that wants to see it outside of the agenda. Just some of the highlights, uh, out of the Patrol Division, we had a lot of, uh, staff compliments, or staff recognitions, both by the people in the community, as well as, uh, supervision staff. Uh, we added a new officer, which I wasn't able to get him here tonight, but I will have him here in the future, Jeremy Gates, uh, finished the academy. And we hired him on, we now have one opening available still. We had nine arrests related to drugs, we actually have a detective that's been focusing on some of the drug issues more closely. Of course, the sex offender compliance checks, the accidents, and the breakdown that you can see under patrol. Uh, we've had, as some of you all up there know, uh, some lawnmower thefts. We've actually, over this past weekend, too, had some increase on burglaries, and we've put out some information to the public. The, uh, we had one lawnmower that was recovered, we had a motorcycle that was also recovered. I will say, again, and I, and I've said this before, a lot of times, with these thefts, or with our vehicle burglaries, ex, especially the ones over the weekend, the common theme is unsecured property. Leaving, uh, a key in a vehicle, leaving doors unlocked and access to those vehicles, that is something that we keep emphasizing on. We had a detective that was recognized for a child abuse, sexual abuse case that he, uh, jumped on in helping the school. Uh, fourteen narcotic cases that were investigated by our narcotic detective in-house. Uh, training, we're staying up there on training, five hundred and twelve hours of training was handed out in the month of May. And of course, you already, we've talked, uh, talked a lot about the flood event. Animal Control had sixty-three calls for service, as you can see, they stayed pretty steady. And we had some great success at Shrimpery with adoptions, and we'll be bringing that information in the next, uh, updates.
I was going to make a comment, then I know that, um, my husband's lawnmower was stolen. It was about five thousand dollars, it was stolen. Um, one of the things that, um, just recognize as far as the community, I mean, his trailer was recovered, it was, they popped the trailer out of his veh, out of his truck, you know, off the truck, and took, you know, and took it. But is, if we see something that doesn't look right, we need to report it. That's how we were, uh, the police were able to recover my husband's, uh, trailer that he built himself, because someone noticed that it was parked there, and it had been there for a few days, and they suspected it was stolen. And so, they called the police, and they called my husband, he went out to identify it, and it was his. So, I think if we all become aware of what's going on around us, and if something looks out of place, report it. Because, you know, the policeman cannot do all the work all the time. Uh, and so, it's up to us as a public to help, to, uh, you know, we, I get upset when I hear things that are being stolen, things that are going on, I get upset, but if I, as, as a citizen, do, don't become involved, I don't have to confront the individual, all I have to do is let the police department know, and let them handle it. So, I think if we do our part, we're going to help the officers recover, and try to detain, and stop some of these, um, uh, incidents that are taking place. So, if we, you know, we don't have to become a police officer or anything like that, but just report it, don't cops, don't, don't go to them and say, hey, you know, but just report, report things, you know, uh, just like, you know, we love to hear, you know, your concerns that you have about what's going on with the city, if it's not working, the streets, or whatever, we also need your help to patrol on what's taking place. No one likes to see trash dumped, so if I see someone, I need to report it. So, that way, that person is being, uh, whatever, whatever steps the city staff needs to take, is being taken care of. So, that's what I just ask, for the cooperation of all of us together, to help our police officers and our code enforcement, to be able to take care of all the issues that we see that's going on. Just wanted to say that.
And, and to further step on that, they, we have a great cooperative partnership with our community. In fact, I, I spent a lot of time yesterday on some of the burglaries, communicating on social media, when they tagged me personally, they tagged the police department page, we're very responsive. And without that community, close community partnerships, we wouldn't have the successes that we are seeing and realizing. So, uh, social media and, and being online is very, very big and vital, and having the community input and partnership has been immensely helpful in our success in resolving some of these cases. So, thank you.
So, I'm excited for the ones that reported it, that saw that, for my husband, he's just excited.
Now, just to find the mower.
You good, Mr. Eric?
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cox?
Mayor, Council, I'm, ask you to consider an Act on Award and Service Agreement for a CAD interface between emergency reporting system, which is the ERS software that we use to report, and crimes. Crimes is software that dispatch and the police use to, on the dispatch center when all the calls come in, and dispatch is what is going to enable us to, for the two software programs to, to interact and talk to each other. There's a lot of compliance issues where, uh, dispatch has confidential information, that they can't, they can only release so much, even to the, you know, for the public service like firemen, we go in and we disrupt dispatch, we go in there, hey, I need my calls, the incident time, incident number, uh, it was going to help them be more, you know, help, uh, the chief on the best practices initiative he's trying to get through, uh, you know, keeping dispatch secure, helps my guys, you know, streamline, not to make those mistakes in entering all the times, exactly, because these get down to seconds, when we report, uh, what, how long it took us to get to calls and stuff, that we get all this, but we're manually entering all this. Dispatch is actually, whatever dispatch has as official time, is what's going to show up on the report. The package you have, I do want to make a small correction, Chief had shared with me, you're going to see the funding was going to be through PD and Drug Seizure Money, that's actually, there's a small correction, the IT Software Division, PD David said that he's going to have the funds, uh, through his division, correct?
That's correct.
Is there any questions on the CAD interface?
No, sir.
Good, that's pretty, that's pretty techie stuff.
Do I hear a motion for approval? Coming from the Right Department, right? The money coming from the Right Department?
Yes, I see.
I'll make a motion, we approve the CAD interface between emergency reporting system and crimes.
I second.
Ball of affairs, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you, Chief, too, on that one. This brings us to item fifteen, second of session. Oh, oh, I'm sorry about the minutes.
Carrie's correction?
Yes.
Thank you.
To amend the minutes from the May sixteenth meeting. Noting that- Yes.
There, sir. Well, I got a thing on that, too, uh, correct, if I'm wrong, correct me, but, uh-
Oh, which one?
On the same item she was talking about, but what I had was, the motion was made by Height, second by Billy, then you were the third vote on that one, that evening.
This is when the item came back the second time.
Yeah, it came, came twice.
Not the last one?
It, it was when it came back the second time.
When it was awarded, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the way I remember it.
Remember what?
That Phillip had made the motion for it, for RAS, or RG, or whatever it is.
Uh, no, Phillip made the motion to bring the item back to the council, and we made the request, requesting council members on items.
I just thought Phillip had made the motion for it, and Billy second, Vicki was the third, and Carrie and I had a abstain, or voted nay against it, that's the way I remember it.
So, do you want to, you can, um, I know-
Just that one?
I can go back and listen to the video again, and then move it back to the next council meeting.
Oh, just that one item?
Well, the minutes in, in there.
In general, okay. Is there a motion for that?
Well, you, I, I think what you're saying is the table approval of those minutes?
Yes.
That's what you, that's the motion you need.
Do we have to make a motion then, till we unapprove them?
Unapprove them, right, and then take them? I think so.
Yeah?
Okay.
Sounds right.
All right, make a motion to unapprove them.
Second. And table.
And table.
Until next meeting.
Until next meeting.
Ball of affairs, aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, we're going to second session. City Council will make, reset second session in chapter five five one of Texas Government Code, item A, five five one point oh seventy-four, Personnel Matters with the City Manager. And if you're still here when we come back, God bless you, if not, I understand. We're going to break right now.